We are done. Thank you, Jenny. Good evening and welcome to the virtual meeting of the City of Dublin Planning and Zoning Commission. The Ohio Legislature passed several laws, several emergency laws to address the pandemic, including the ability for public entities to conduct virtual meetings. We appreciate this ability to maintain our continuity of government and will be holding our meetings online and live streaming on YouTube until further notice. You can access the live stream on the city's website. We welcome your comments on cases. In order to submit any questions or comments during the meeting, please use the form under the streaming video on the city's website. Your questions and comments will be relayed to the commission by the meeting moderator. Please provide a valid name and address when submitting your comments and refrain from making any inappropriate comments. We want to accommodate public participation in comments to the greatest extent possible. At this time, if you will join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, commissioners, if you will, please turn your audio on and your video off. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic, to the Constitution, to one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Ms. Beal, will you please call roll this evening?
Yes, Mr. Grimes?
Here.
Mr. Supalak?
Here.
Ms. Call?
Here.
Mr. Fishman? Lauren?
Here.
Ms. Fox?
Here.
Ms. Kennedy?
Here.
Ms. Schneer?
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Beal. I am looking for a motion of acceptance of tonight's documents and approval of minutes.
Show move.
Thank you, Mr. Grimes.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Fishman.
Ms. Beal? Mr. Schneer?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Fishman?
Yes.
Ms. Call?
Yes.
Mr. Supalak?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Yes.
Thank you again, Ms. Beal. The Planning and Zoning Commission is an advisory board to city council when rezoning and plating of property are under consideration. In such cases, the commission has the final decision-making responsibility. Sorry, I am skipping lines tonight. In such cases, city council will receive recommendations from the commission. In other cases, the commission has the final decision-making responsibility. Anyone who intends to address the commission on any of these administrative cases must be sworn in. The agenda order is typically determined at the beginning of the meeting by the chair. The rules and regulations of the Planning and Zoning Commission state that no new agenda items are to be introduced after 10:30 p.m. There's one case eligible tonight for the consent agenda, case 20-185 AFDP, for the Greco Law Office's sign. Does anyone on the commission wish to pull this case from the consent agenda? Seeing no...
I have a question about it.
Okay, Mr. Fishman?
Yeah, I don't know if it needs to be pulled, but my question is, is the sign and code, and I think that's a PUD, is internal lighting allowed?
We should probably swear in then for this case? Yep. All right. Anyone interested intending to address the commission on either one of these cases? This is for case one and case four, so that's the Greco Law Office and are the Tuller Road Townhomes. Could you please turn your video on? And raise your right hand and answer in the affirmative. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony to this commission?
Yes, yes, I do.
Thank you. All right, Claudia?
Yes, to answer Mr. Fishman's question, there are no limitations as to what type of lighting is permitted, so the internal illumination is permitted.
Mr. Fishman, did that address your concern?
It does, and the sign meets code, I assume, right?
It does.
Same size as the other one, yeah. Yeah, then I have no problem with it.
All right. But I am looking for consent case motion below, so let's... Do we have any public comment on this, Claudia? I forgot to ask.
We do not have any public comment on any of the cases on tonight's agenda, actually.
All right. But I am looking for a motion to approve the amended final development plan with three conditions.
Show move. Second.
Thank you. I have a first and a second. Ms. Beal?
Mr. Supalak?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Yes.
Ms. Call?
Yes.
Mr. Fishman?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Schneer?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Beal, and thank you to Greco Law and representatives here tonight. We appreciate your attention and we're grateful that we were able to expedite this and get you all taken care of early this evening, so thank you very much for attending.
Thank you all. Greatly appreciated.
All right, moving on to cases two and three that we are going to hear together. This is Ayershire Farms 20-092Z PDP and 20-093PP. This is rezoning and preliminary development plan and preliminary plat, PID 272000166. This application is a request for review and a recommendation of approval to the city council for a rezoning of approximately 11.37 acres for a rural district to a planned unit development district to develop 30 single-family lots. We will also be hearing the preliminary plat request, which will accompany the rezoning. The site is southeast of the intersection of Shire Rings Road and Cos Gray Road. And it looks like, Zach, you have our presentation this evening?
I do. Can you all see the screen?
Yes, sir.
Wonderful. Well, good evening. As stated, this is two applications, the first being a rezoning with preliminary development plan and the second being a preliminary plat for the development of Ayershire Farms. This is the second step in a three-step process for planned unit development district applications, the first of which was the informal review, which we took before the commission back in September of 2020. It should be stated, this will not be the final determining body tonight for either the rezoning or the preliminary plat, as there will be recommendations to city council for a future meeting date. The site is highlighted in yellow on the screen. It is located at the southeast corner of the intersection of Shire Rings Road and Cos Gray Road. It is zoned rural district, as it was annexed into the city in February of 2020. And to show you a zoomed-in site plan, or not site plan, a zoomed-in photo of this lot or these lots, there are three lots. The furthest west is currently being used for agricultural reasons, and the two to the east are the rear yards of existing residential sites. This application will combine all three lots into one for the development while also splitting off for 30 single-family units. Showing on the screen is a future land use plan that comes from the community plan for Dublin. The site is also highlighted in yellow here and is designated for mixed residential low density. This designation generally allows for between two to three dwellings per acre, and it's meant for areas that are intended to provide a mix of housing options in a transition from existing single-family residential homes to something more dense. In this case, the site is designated in this area as Ballantrae to the south is a single-family development, and then north of Shire Rings, it does transition into the West Innovation District. So the site does offer a more of a buffer between traditional, single-family housing and more industrial and more compact, densely built-on developments. As stated earlier, this was an informal review before the commission back in September. This site is approximately 11.37 acres in size, and the applicant was proposing 34 single-family lots with about 2.24 acres of open space, as well as three new public streets that would be dedicated to the city. Based on the size of the site and the number of single-family lots, they were sitting at about three dwellings per acre, so they were pushing the top end of what that designation allows for. Some comments that the commission had with this layout, the site design, or they had some, you all had some discussion about concern over how dense it was. You would like to see a few of the lots be removed to decrease the density for the site, as well as the open space not being active or passive enough, as it is currently being used solely for stormwater management and nothing else. I will fast forward here to what is being proposed tonight with the rezoning, the preliminary development plan, and preliminary plat. The applicant is requesting to rezone the site from rural to planned unit development district to allow for 30 single-family lots and about 2.62 acres of open space. The applicant has reduced the total lots on the site from 34 to 30, which decreased the density to 2.63, so about in the middle of what that designation for the low-density mixed residential uses allow for. And the applicant with the elimination of four lots has opened up more open space here while also delivering some of the extra lot side or the lot space that was eliminated into additional lots here. The open space that is being proposed now at the northwest corner of the site does have a mixed-use path that is more of an active space with potential for a gazebo or any other additional details that will be finalized with the final development plan. And they also providing more of a passive space with the southeast reserve shown on the screen, basically to activate these two open spaces for the neighborhood and also for anyone that is utilizing the multi-use paths that run throughout the city. It should also be noted that Lot 18, shown on the screen, will not be developed initially as there is existing utilities that belong to the property owner to the north, and the applicant has dedicated itself to not developing Lot 18 until those utilities become non-desirable anymore for the resident to the north, or if they become inoperable. So in the development text that was provided with this application, there are two sets of setbacks that are provided. The first is the development setbacks. This is the setbacks that are, or these are the setbacks that are located along the perimeter of the development as a whole. So you can see that along Shire Rings Road, there's a 45-foot setback for building and pavement, as well as Cos Gray Road to the west, and to any residential, which would be the north property line that's not Shire Rings, Ballantrae to the east, or Ballantrae to the south, there's a 20-foot building setback from the perimeter of the development. And the second set of setbacks that are provided are the lot setbacks, which are specific to each lot. The applicant is proposing to have 20-foot setbacks for all front yard setbacks on these lots. The side yard setbacks are split into two categories with lots 1 through 15. Those lots 1 through 15 are located along the west property line with Cos Gray Road and along the south property line with Ballantrae, to be six feet a minimum for the setback with a minimum of 14 feet of separation between principal structures. The intent of this is to allow for more developable space on the lot, but also require that the distance between buildings maintains a specific distance, which would be 14 feet in this distance. So think more developable space on the lot, but it allows for more variety in building location while still maintaining a specific distance between structures. And then the second category is lots 16 through 30, which are the interior lots for the site, as well as the properties that are on the north property line that border existing residential would be six feet minimum setback for the lot with 16 feet between principal structures. The rear yard setback is split into three here, lots 1 through 5, which border Cos Gray Road, are 45 feet to allow for a larger buffer from Cos Gray Road. Lots 6 through 22, all border existing residential sites, and they are proposing a 30-foot rear yard setback. And the interior lots, which would be lots 23 through 30, are proposing a 20-foot setback while allowing patios to encroach 10 feet into the rear yard. So this is to allow for more space to be developed on the lots, but also accommodate any amenities for people that are buying these lots. It should be noted that there are some discrepancies between the development plan and the development text. For example, lots 1 through 5 in the development text state that it's a 30-foot setback where on the plans it is 45 feet. So we have just asked the applicant to make this revision with the development text and development plan to make sure they are cohesive and consistent between the two and make sure that lots 1 through 5 are replicated in the development text, it's 45 feet. Showing on the screen are the open spaces as well that are proposed with this application. Open space is a requirement for preliminary plats and PUDs. And the formula is shown on the right side of the screen is a lot of numbers, so I'll just go quickly through this. The formula takes into account the size of the lots or size of the sites and the number of lots, and that is how you would get the total required open space dedication for this. The applicant is required to provide 1.13 acres, and they are providing 2.62 acres between three reserves, so they are meeting this requirement per code. The three acres are highlighted. Reserve A is in red, Reserve B is in blue, and Reserve C is in yellow. These will all be dedicated to the city while being maintained by the HOA. However, the two retention ponds that are located in Reserves A and C will be maintained by the city, as this is standard practice throughout HOA, or throughout developments across the city. Also touch briefly on landscaping here, the applicant will be providing a landscape buffer along Cos Gray Road, which will replicate what is shown in Ballantrae with their front edge along Cos Gray Road. They'll continue to work with staff to determine the amount of trees, the amount of buffering, and what this landscape buffer should look like with the final development plan. Showing on the screen are some proposed front elevations of the housing that will be proposed with this development. I won't touch much on this, as the applicant can talk more towards why they chose these architectural styles, their materials, and the layouts of these buildings when following this presentation. Finally, the last part of this application is the preliminary plat. The preliminary plat, to replicate what we've talked about already, shows the 30 lots, the three public right-of-way, and the three reserves of open space equaling 2.62 acres. That will be a part of this development. The applicant also provided a TIS or a traffic impact study, as it is a residential development, and the TIS did determine that the applicant is required to put in a left-turn lane along Shire Rings Road. So the applicant is working with adjacent property owners to acquire the right-of-way needed for these improvements, and they will be included with the development of the site. The applicant will also continue to work with staff regarding the names of these streets. It is a requirement with the preliminary plat that the names be included and finalized with these applications. We ran into some issues with the names that they had provided us for these street names, so we will continue to work with the applicant to make sure that the street names are appropriate for emergency services should any future emergencies happen with the development of the site. Staff has reviewed this application to all applicable criteria and are recommending approval with seven conditions. We ended up adding a condition earlier today regarding Lot 18, that the applicant maintain Lot 18 until the lot is sold for development. This is just to make sure that the site doesn't remain vacant and basically eyesore within this development, that the developer will maintain this lot until it is sold. And staff is recommending approval of the preliminary plat with one condition as well. I am happy to answer any questions the commission may have. Michael Henderson is here with engineering, and he'd also be happy to answer any engineering questions you have. Otherwise, the applicant is here to address any comments or concerns you have. Thank you.
Thank you, Zach. Now, the applicant is here. Do you have a presentation or a statement you would like to make before I turn time over to the commission to ask questions?
Good evening. I'm Todd Foley with Pod Design here on behalf of the applicant. I did want to just run through a couple of quick things. I don't have a formal presentation. I know we had a really quality experience with you guys with the informal previously, so I don't want to rehash a lot of that, but so I can kind of go through that if you want me to right now, or I don't know if it's possible maybe to pull up the rendered site plan just as kind of a reference point. Certainly, we're excited to be at this point. This has been a long journey, and I think it's resulted in a plan that has gotten better every time we've collectively reviewed things. We spent a lot of time with staff, and we're very pleased to have their support on this staff report that they provided you. A lot of effort's gone into it, and I think we've been able to meet and address a lot of their concerns. I wanted to focus on what we heard from you last time when we met back in September, because obviously those were, I think, equally important as far as how we transition this plan. And the highlights that we heard, obviously, were centered around the idea of potentially being too dense, the idea of how we're representing our open space in the context of the community, and, you know, what are we offering the residents here, you know, as a trade-off to potentially having that higher unit count? You know, the concept of our building separation and how those lots are configured, and then how that equates to who's maintaining it and all those type of things. Obviously, interested about the architecture. And then there were some pretty specific comments, you know, Lot 10 being at the terminus of our public entry street and light trespass and things like that. So we kind of took a step back from that, and those were all comments that we were able to go back to the drawing board with, and, you know, the plan that we brought that Zach has up right now is a result of that. And so we've then staff comments, a lot of engineering comments that we've been able to address, and we're really excited about the plan we have now. We think, you know, we've increased the size of the lots, which has allowed us to increase the MAC, the minimum building separation that you would experience between two lots. So we have, you know, 62-foot minimum lots. We have some lots that are a little larger, 64. And then, you know, with the 14-foot and the 16-foot building separation, we've been able to maintain some variety to how the lots will look. You know, not all lot, not every lot is identical. It's going to allow for the variety of housing product type that the owner is proposing. And so, and those are some of the positive things that we heard from you when we talked about, so it was really important that we maintain that. Obviously, with the reduction of lots, we've been able to improve our open space, and we're really excited about the feature that we've added in the northwest corner. We think that it's, we had kind of a unique opportunity. This is a really unique site with it being, you know, fronting on two public streets. It's got kind of a weird geometry. It's, you know, it's kind of narrow, so it's going to be restrictive on what kind of development could happen here. And so we've been able to produce this kind of open space in northwest corner that, quite frankly, is going to be a destination or a node, I think, for people in the greater community who are utilizing the bike path. It's going to definitely be a gathering spot with the gazebo and benches, and there's a little kind of circuit walk that could benefit the residents of the neighborhood. And it's a way that, you know, you can kind of gather, congregate before you go out beyond the community with the bike path. So we're excited about that. We view that as the more active, more public, more visible type of open space. And then when we go down in the southeast corner with the addition of this kind of little eyebrow that we peeled off with more of a kind of an overlook upon, so we've chose to kind of keep that more passive, more serene, added some benches. We'll be looking at that from a landscape perspective if we're fortunate to get on to the final development plan stage of how we can kind of create more of a, like I said, more of a serene type of setting back through there. So that improvement of open space, we think, has, I think, hopefully, met the intent of where a lot of your comments were centered around. You know, this project, as Mike King, and he wasn't able to join us on the call this evening, but the owner, you know, they are targeting what they refer to as more of a mature buyer, somebody who may have older children, high school, college, that type of thing. These are not necessarily marketed towards young families with younger kids, and these are people that don't want to be a part of condominium association but still want, you know, a 3,000-square-foot house, you know, somewhere in a $450,000 price range. So there's still the amenities that you experience with a larger house. They're not ready to downsize, but they're starting to smart-size their lives. So looking at the amount of time they spend maintaining their lawns and what things go into the makeup of the lot. So this project, you know, we think that it's also something that they have envisioned, that this really is kind of a boutique development, that it's themed, that there is a true architectural continuity with the type of lots that are going to, or excuse me, the type of houses that are going to be developed. You've heard us mention several kind of architectural items, this idea of maybe a farmhouse type of look. So, you know, when we start talking about materials and we provided those elevations, it's hopefully a way to demonstrate that it's still the goal and the vision of trying to utilize that style. You know, we'll be solidifying those things again at the final development plan stage if we're fortunate to move forward, but the commitment is there for four-sided architecture, you know, utilizing different materials. We've even gone so far as to identify lots 1, 22, 23, 26, 27, and 30, the lots that are visible to the public streets, that we even try to go above and beyond the commitment of four-sided architecture by providing more feature elements or more landscaping in those areas so that we truly are embracing the views from the outside in, in addition to having a high-quality development, you know, with the lot or with the buildings as they're designed. So the, so I think in general, we're really pleased with the direction we've gone. I definitely want to get to the comments of the commission, because I know that, you know, this type of product has, you know, been a topic of discussion in the community. But we really feel like where we started, you know, gosh, it's been probably 16, 18 months maybe, to where we're at today, we're happy with the direction we've gone, and we're really, we want, you know, the planning commission's support, and I hope that we've done the right things to achieve that. So I myself, I am on the call. We also have our civil engineer, Ben Miller, on the call. Jack Reynolds, our legal counsel, is available, and so is Courtney Mitchell on behalf of the ownership. So we are all here to answer your questions, and we certainly appreciate your time this evening. So thank you for letting me speak there.
You're welcome. Thank you, Mr. Foley. All right, at this time, I'm looking for questions. Questions for the commission or questions for the applicant? Ms. Kennedy, did you want to start us off?
Actually, I have no follow-up questions, just comments at the end. Thank you, Ms. Kennedy.
Mr. Grimes?
In the site characteristic, characteristic notes in the staff report, it mentions the eastern portion of the site was not part of the original annexation. How does that feed into the overall plan, or where is it on the site plan?
Zach, do you want to field that one?
Certainly. So I can pull this up as well, but the, all sites that are shown currently, can you all see the overview?
Yes.
Okay. So all three of these sites are currently annexed into the city, so there's no future issue in terms of, you know, future annexations that have to happen. you know, future annexations that have to happen. They've all been accounted for with this application to move forward.
So the entire plot is in the city of Dublin?
Correct.
Okay. That's the only question I had.
Looking back to the commission, any other questions? Ms. Fox.
I had a couple of questions for Mr. Foley. The footprint, you have the various house styles, which the architecture is lovely and it, and it was the last time we saw it as well. Are they varying in footprint size? Can you give me a little sense of the differences in the sizes of the different styles?
Yeah, absolutely. I appreciate the question. So, you know, one item, I think we've, we've mentioned before that the owners will be, will be pre-programming these lots with the different building types that they have. There are ranch footprints. There are two story footprints. Most of them will have three car garages. The square footages, as I understand would be right now, they're around three thousand square feet in size is what they would start with. But they would have basements. You know, first floor under suites, you know, obviously the, like I said, the ranch and the two stories. So some, I hope that kind of answers what you're getting at. I
I, I think what I was kind of curious about, which, which is something that I like on the plan, is the varying lot sizes. So I understand you'll be pre-programming, but I was just kind of curious, like on the interior lots, twenty-three through thirty, I'm assuming that would be a smaller footprint than what you would find on lot five, six, seventeen, sixteen. Is that
Yeah, your assessment is correct. And, and that's part of why we've, I apologize. I'm looking at, I'm trying to pull that exhibit up that where we had the, the layout. But the, that's why we have a variety of lot sizes is that some of these housing products, some of the different footprints and building designs are going to be more suitable to the deeper lots and some of them are designed to be you know, more, more, what's the right word I'm looking for? More, not compact, but you know, more, more semi-private and maybe just centered around an outdoor entertainment space and, and not a large yard. So, yeah, we absolutely, there will be several lots that, that certain footprints cannot go on. And that's one of the reasons why we tried to show that exhibit to you, just to kind of get a feel for the idea of with the five or six, seven footprints that they're entertaining right now, how they'll kind of play out through there. And one other further comment and I'll be quiet, but that I forgot to mention with the pre-programming, they will, we stipulated in the development text that if there will be no same or similar that are repeated with any lot to either side or directly across the street. So again, more safeguards to provide variety and architectural interest and no repetition. So you're on mute, Ms. Fox.
Sorry. I thought I did that right. It wasn't mentioned in the development text, but will you be staggering the, the front of the houses a bit along the street front or will they all be sort of in a straight line or, you didn't, maybe that wasn't, I didn't see it in there, but by, you know, so many foot, six foot, eight foot, something like that, or so that they don't, you know, line up linear.
That's a great question. And I think what you're gonna, what you're gonna experience with some of the lots that are on the curved parts of the streets and the alignments so that we can achieve the three car garages and the driveways that'll be associated with that, we're going to get some natural staggering that's going to have to occur. In addition to the natural staggering of the front of the building facades already. So I, I definitely think that's something you're going to see with, with the final layout. So
And you know where I'm, you know what I mean. I mean, obviously you know what I mean by that, but that's kind of an important element so that it doesn't feel like you know, that that has a little dance going on on the street as you look down, you have, you know, peeking from one porch looks a little different than the entrance to another. Yeah.
And that's going to be really important on this small, small, you know, the small development. But that boutique neighborhood, you're going, those are the small things that are going to make the biggest difference. So it's a great question. I appreciate that.
Okay. And one last question was, and it, it wasn't obvious and it will be obvious, I know, on the final development plan, but do all of the homes have a it's hard to tell because we only have, you know, a one dimensional image, but they all have a back door going out to a patio space or it's hidden in, in one of the little small shed like additions on the back, but they all have back doors.
Yes, they will, and they do vary. They are not in the same location. If, if you look at L two point zero and you zoom in on that, you can see where some of the steps where they kind of come out of the building footprints. They're, they're generally oriented on that little bump out that's on the back of the building footprint, but but yes, they will all have a rear access and out to what we anticipate will be, you know, pretty, pretty lavish, outdoor entertainment areas, patios, decks, things like that. So
Okay. And, and then well, I, I think, I don't know if this is a question or a comment in discussing it with planning, I think the development text that you are allowing a six foot fence. Is that still in your text?
I may have to have Jack chime in here on that.
I am here. This is Jack.
Eye under fencing, a height of six foot and no farther than three foot away.
That was
Go ahead.
That is only around the patio, not around the exterior of the lot itself. So if you wanted privacy around your patio, we were trying to allow them to do a fence around the patio, but not the entire lot, like a rear fence.
Right, right. I think in Dublin, and planning can correct me, I believe that we don't allow fences any higher than four foot. And you can answer that, but I believe that's true, isn't it, Zach?
Our standard code allows for four feet.
Right, okay. Just wanted to bring that up and well, we'll address some of those in the comments, but those are my only questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Foley, do you know approximately the percentage of the, the homes are you planning for that will have three car garages? I know you mentioned that most of them will, but do you have, you know, a guess on?
I apologize. I don't have a, a specific number to put back to you. The intention is that and that the homes are designed such that they all could accommodate a three car garage. Now, some of them, as you look at the conceptual elevations, some of them will have that third car on the end of the, end of the building. Some of it actually have it built into the, to the middle of it. So that variability may be where you see potentially want not have a third car, but the intent is to achieve a third car on all of them if we can. So
So are there any lots that would be prohibitive with any of the floor plans, not all of the floor plans, but any of the floor plans with a third car?
We, we think at this point in time, and, and part of my, my hesitancy to be, you know, solid with the surety is the buildings, the floor plans haven't been totally finalized, but to the extent that we've gone, we feel pretty confident that we can, we should be able to achieve that on, on every lot. Now, as we get into the fine tuning of designs and things, you know, there may be things that arise, but as it stands today, we, we think we can do that. So
And then another question, do you happen to know the plan for the distance of the walk path in the more active open space?
That's a great question. And I believe that we have that at because the, the bike path extension should be eight, I'm guessing that's eight foot. So I think we will probably a six foot path through there. We would want to step it down a little bit just to kind of create some hierarchy of of, of those paths. So people understand that they might be exiting the true public path and coming onto a smaller area. I think we want to, we wouldn't want it to be much larger than six, you know, five, six foot. Looking to see if we have that spelled out.
And then if you also have the distance of that little loop area?
Let me, let me, I can look here while, if there's any other comments and, and then that way you're not staring at me looking like
One question for staff. It appears that the lanes are about twelve feet in width. Is that an accurate perusal of the, the documentation that we received?
Yes, that's correct. The, the public streets will be built to public standards, which is a twelve foot lane.
And has fire at the turnabouts to make sure that there are no safety concerns with the navigation of those?
Right. They, they have and they don't have any concerns with the geometry of the cul-de-sac bulbs.
Thank you. All right. Commission, any other questions for staff or the applicant? Mr. Schneer.
Couple of questions, probably first for staff. The public access is only in the northwest because that's the only place the bike path is. So there's not there wouldn't be public access to the other two open spaces.
I'm kind of struggling with your, do you mind just buy a little more on that question for me?
So there's three open spaces. But in reality, only the one in the northwest would be sort of accessible to the public because that's where the bike path is. The others have no access to any city.
Zach, you're muted.
Thank you. That's the first time. So so there's an existing path along Cos Gray Road. In, in terms of just the layout of the site the applicant took, it made the most sense when they were going through since the informal to have that open space. I know that was the discussion we had following the meeting, the informal review. And they wanted to make that as close to the basically, that's, to them, that was the most accessible open space location to where it'd be feasible for the neighbors and anybody visiting the site and it'd be feasible and convenient for, for the neighborhood. So there was at least in my understanding, there's no, no other discussion of putting additional you know, publicly accessible open space. It just, to the applicant, this made the most sense to put it here.
Okay. Thank you. And then question for the applicant with respect to the elevations, picking up on Ms. Fox's comments or questions. Will material, will, will materials vary from house to house? Will that be a requirement? And will the colors be required to vary from house to house? You mentioned that the elevations would be, just, just a question. I'm not, don't have a plan necessarily.
Yeah, no, great question. Yeah, color, colors are a part of that variability as well. I skimmed over that, but in our text, we specify it's, it's a color palette will not be, you won't have a blue house next to a blue house. That, that will vary. And, and then likewise, the materials will vary between the two as well. There if you, if you kind of, as you study those, there are, you know, there's shake siding, there's horizontal siding, there's born batten, there'll be metal roof, shing roof. There could be similar components and elements between the houses, but they're going to be designed, located and configured differently. So
There are only so many combinations and permutations.
Sure. Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Foley. Thank you, Mr. Foley.
To, to respond to your question earlier, so that path area up in the northwest corner, we do have it shown as a six foot path. And it's approximately about three hundred and thirty linear feet of, of path. That includes the loop and the extension out to the path and then the little stub that takes you back to the public sidewalk.
Got it. I, I'm a runner and so it was just, hey, is that a quarter mile? Mr. Supalak.
Quick question, I think for, for Zach. And Zach, this is probably a yes or no just to, just to validate, we have it under, under control. Obviously, in this package, we see at present a tree survey. There's some sense of which trees are going away, which trees are staying and what kind of total count of new trees are going to be, have to be brought to this site. At, I think, I think right now it lists a caliper inch of width of two point five inches per tree. I guess I'm going to, and this is, this is just sort of new territory for me. So I, again, I'm looking for a yes or no really here that we have it under control, not so much a how. But the question is, so obviously the site and all those trees, all those, I think, three hundred some trees that are going to go back on the site are not going to be done in one fell swoop. These lots are in time going to each be built. And then at the end of the entire development is when sort of we have to be right with the tree count and the replacement count, those types of things. Do we have, I mean, seems a little bit, we'll have to stay on top of the management of that as all these sites do it. Do we have our hands wrapped around that effectively and processed in place for that?
Yeah. So they would be required to provide the final count of replacement trees as well as trees that they'd be required to replace, or place down anyways before, with the final development plan. So I know our, our landscape, our landscape team, they typically work alongside the applicant as we get to file development plan to determine the location of replacement trees. Not just replacement trees, but trees they are required to place in. So we'll, we'll have a good grasp on where these are going to be located, the number they're locating. As well as making sure that the locations of them are appropriate to you know, in orientation of the site. So, you know, making sure not all their replacement trees are going in the landscape buffer. That's one item, you know, we'll continue to work with, with Todd and his team on that. So yes.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions at this time for either staff or the applicant? All right. Looking for comments. Ms. Kennedy, do you want to start us off?
Sure. Thank you, Ms. Call. I'm generally in support of this application. Primarily due to the fact that you listened to our comments last time. The density has gone down, the open space has gone up and beyond the requirement, which is great. The lot size has gone up. We do have the connectivity. I'm just going to follow on to Ms. Call's comment and, you know, a path, the path in the northwest corner being three hundred and thirty feet is point zero six miles. So it's such a, such a small, almost insignificant route. I can't imagine you know, going there to do a loop or, you know, you'd have to do a lot of loops to get to some type of distance. So I don't know if there's a way to, if I had to offer a suggestion or some type of feedback, it would be if, if there was a way to expand that loop in some kind of meaningful way to make it some meaningful distance for someone to go do a small loop and still be in the neighborhood. But other than that, I, I think this is a great, great proposal and I'm in favor of it. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kennedy. Mr. Schneer, would you like to go next?
I think the applicant did a great job, responsive, receptive. And I think it's, it's a great project. With regard to the loop, you know, I'm a runner as well. You always like to see more space rather than less space, but I appreciate the constraints and you know, less is more when it comes to this, I guess. So I'm, I'm strongly yes.
Thank you, Mr. Schneer. Mr. Grimes.
I want to thank them for the better plan. I like it a lot, lot better. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Grimes. Mr. Supalak.
I concur with all my fellow commissioners. Appreciate relaxing the count right on the density there slightly. The amenity uses at either end of the open space are, are good and complimentary. That's helpful. The architecture is good. I, I am going to echo sort of a comment I, I think I made last time that this was in here. I appreciate the architecture. I could, I could be all in favor of a few more lifts of of the, the stacked stone on occasion, right? I think you have it just at the bottom base of the building, of the houses. That worked in a few choice, choose, few choice facades in appropriate houses would be, would be lovely. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Supalak. Mr. Fishman.
Yes, I, I all, can you hear me? I also appreciate you listening to us in the preliminary and I really appreciate the changes. I just have a couple of things that, that I would appreciate some support on. First of all, in the information, you said you would be Information, you said you would be building a either a shade. Type thing or a gazebo. And 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 I would, I would like to to put in there that that it would be a gazebo. Because of the type of neighborhood that you have, there's going to. Two-story units with three-car garages are definitely going to have families. And and in the neighborhoods in Dublin that we have gazebos, they're really well-used if they're decent decent-sized gazebos. And 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 since this is a small development with with, even though you've expanded the 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 open space. I think that the, as as Mrs. Fox always says, that gathering places are important and and where people can get together. And if if you had a gazebo that was, you know, 20 by 20, enough for people to gather and enjoy. I would like to put that in the somewhere in the in the. Conditions that it'd be a gazebo and a decent-sized gazebo. For for gathering. And the other thing is, they, I assume the driveways are going to be blacktop driveways?
You caught me with a question and I don't know the answer to. Courtney, did you guys discuss that at all?
Well, I I would like to see them either stamped concrete or brick. Because the buildings, the the architecture I looked at is mostly hardy plank, even though it's different types of hardy plank. And I'm sure it'll be okay. I. And 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 so the driveways, in some cases, are going to be pretty long for the size of the lot and size of the building. And and I think they'll, blacktop requires care, it'll stand out more. And I think that that to to look like Dublin. I I would like to put in that they either be stamped concrete or or brick. I think that would really. Add to the the community. Other than that, I think my colleagues asked all the questions, made all the comments. I think I, as I said, I'm very appreciative of what you've done. And it's just those two things, gazebo and 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 not having blacktop driveways.
Thank you, Mr. Fishman. Ms. Fox.
I I also want to compliment you on listening and and working with the commission. I I. I don't know. How many other applicants had reduced their density by over 10% when we asked them to reduce density? So I think you had 34 lots and and to reduce it by four lots is is to me is significant. And I and I really applaud you for that because I know in a small development, it's hard to let go of, you know, a few lots like that. So. So I appreciate that quite a bit. I think that the open space that you offered in the areas that you offered it is good, is really good. And one of the things that I really like about it is that on that Northwest corner. You have a presentation to the public street of this development that just says, wow, I wonder what's back there. You know, it's just, it's going to have a really nice presentation from Shire Range. I agree with Warren on the conversation about what that covered, that little covered structure is. As I looked at this and after going through COVID and all of us hating to be inside in the winter. I would, I would like to make a suggestion that instead of a gazebo, which is kind of expected everywhere. And you have this wonderful farmhouse sort of style that you look at some sort of a hardscape. Covered terrace that incorporates a fireplace. Which would bring you out in the winter to sit underneath it and to go sit in it. And you think of farmhouses as places where you can go out in the back and have a bonfire or sit around, you know, with some. You know, a nice warm fire. And I just wonder if that would really bring people out and use that space. In all seasons. And then, and if it were nestled up against that pond, how beautiful that would be to sit by the fire and look at a wonderful fountain in the middle of the winter. In frosted water. I mean, just. Imagine how beautiful that would be. And then that little small. Walking path could surround a perennial garden or a cottage garden. I know this is final development stuff. But I'm going to throw it out there for you to just, you know, kind of brainstorm a bit about because I think that that, even though it's small. It could be significantly beautiful. And I would encourage you to to think about that. And then on the other end of the pond, I absolutely agree with you. That's sort of a passive space. And it it might be a great idea that you utilize it as a place that you said this is older. It's a nice place for grandparents to walk their little ones down and maybe go fishing. Or sit on a little, a little wooden deck or something that you might find out in the country. That gives you a sense that it's a good place to go and and listen to the lessons of life. I might be asking too much of these open spaces, but I think if you push them to the limit, sometimes you might be surprised what you come up with when it comes to these landscaped areas. And then I have one more question for you, and I don't know if it's possible or not, but as I looked at your landscape plan. And lots, the inner lots back up to each other, and you have a 20-foot easement, a sewer easement going down the middle. Right? And you're allowing a 10-foot encroachment into, not into that, but up to that, correct, for patio? I would like not to see any kind of a privacy fencing other than maybe some. Fencing that was wrought iron or partial masonry or something where you actually. Have privacy, but you don't have total blocking of views from each other. And I wonder. I just wonder between lot 26 and 27. If you take a look at that from Arishire Court. And this is just a suggestion, but that is, that is a distant. View from Arishire down four houses to the pond. You're going to have a straight view down there. Is there a landscape feature on Arishire at the street? That would picture frame that all the way back to the pond? And just give you a piece of jewelry right there when it comes to a little, whether that's a. A little pergola arch that you would just have this little view down? I don't know if it's possible. I don't know if you have enough width to it. But I looked at that and I thought that could connect those smaller. Board houses and then maybe at the intersections of each of those. Like between lot 27, 26, 25, and 28. You have a small. Little raised, I don't know. I'm just thinking, is there a way that you can, you can create a vista distance, a look down there? That had an interest and maybe the intersection of four houses. It was a small little raised perennial garden or some cottage field that would just bring some interest to the those houses back and up to each other. Instead of just staring in each other's backyard. Do you know what I'm saying?
I do.
Thinking out loud.
Think those are great suggestions and and I would, I would just, I think, ask, as we, you know, we don't have our final engineering yet. So you mentioned the stormwater easement and we're going to, as we have evolved through that, I think those are some great comments and some things that we can try to be mindful of. And we, those spots in between the lots. As well, some ideas. We, I don't have a a picture to show you of what that gazebo feature might be or whatever. That's to be determined. So these are great, great comments there. So I appreciate.
And it's in like what, and in my mention of that, I'm not trying to design it for you. I'm just saying, I'm looking at. At what, I love the fact that you've activated these open spaces. I can't compliment you enough on the way you listened in. And I think that I live in the historic district. I can walk and and go down to the river or I can go get a cup of coffee somewhere. In in suburbia, out there in farther ends of the city, there's no place to do these kinds of things. There's no place to take your grandkids. But the kind of spaces that you activate with these open spaces, as small as they are. Create a sense of community within that residential neighborhood of 30 homes that's very special. So I I really appreciate where you've gone with this, and I think the designs are lovely. So.
You for your kind words. So.
If I could speak for just a second. On the applicant, the owner, Courtney Mitchell. I just got kicked off for about 10 minutes, so I missed a lot. But I do want to address a couple of things, a couple of your questions before I got kicked off. Every home has three cars, is a three-car garage. Every home is a 50-foot wide. That that's how they they fit. So every home has three cars, every home has a basement. Mike and I live in Ballantre. We're walking distance from Ashar Farms. And it's something that is very important to us. As Todd said it very eloquently. We think about not downsizing, but smart sizing. And so our whole thing is, you know, what would be the best thing for us? Someday we'll have grandchildren. We'll do that. I'm a runner also, you know, so the path joins with Ballantre. I mean, the Ballantre is huge and I run through Ballantre every day. So. These are all things that are very important to us as well. And we've really appreciated your input. Your suggestions and and I I think we've taken them to heart and it's made our project a better project. So we appreciate everything that you have. To say to us.
Thank you, Ms. Mitchell. Thank you. Mr. Fishman, did you have another item?
Just one comment. As 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 usual, Jane said it better than I did. I I'm not stuck on a gazebo. Something with a cover on it, you know, a roof on it that people fit get under during climate weather and gather. Is what I would ask. It certainly doesn't have to be a gazebo. The other thing, the the driveways, I don't know how much support I get from the rest of the staff, but the rest of my colleagues, but. The looking at that, I looked at it very closely, the plan and the driveways are long and 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 I think. And also, I really appreciate how you've improved it. I I can't tell you enough how I was really thrilled when I opened the packet and saw the changes you made. And and so we really appreciate listening to us and 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 but the driveways and 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 the 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 covered area. And I think other than that, there's not much I can, I can, I can say. I think it's it's really great. But I could really appreciate looking in the final development, maybe have driveway stamped. Concrete or or brick, something that doesn't stand out. So with the with the hardy plank houses. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fishman. But thank you to both the applicant and my fellow commissioners for all of your comments. I'll just round this out. I'll keep it brief. First of all, I want to thank you. I know it's a little thing, but your your side setbacks. The fact that you wrote in there the six foot, but no less than 14 feet between houses, that two feet, it it makes a big difference. Especially if we have any mechanicals there on the side of the houses. So thank you very much for that. Thank you for the drawings, the kind of mocked-up drawings. You almost have a build envelope in there and that helps us kind of visualize where a home could be. So thank you for that. The call out, Ms. Mitchell, for the three-car garages. One of my my immediate go-tos when I hear someone saying it's going to be marketed toward that, you know, established families. So teenagers and college kids, I think more cars. And on these roads that are only 24 feet wide, if you have one car parked on one side, then it just, I I live on one of those streets. And it, my my husband drives an F-250, and so it makes it very, very difficult for him to get around. And my brain immediately goes to the fire truck, the ambulance, they couldn't get around. So thank you for the call out that the three-car garages, because three-car garages come with three-car driveways. I'm not, you know, gung-ho, you know, you have to do a stamped concrete or a a brick driveway. I know that that increments cost significantly, but concrete rather than blacktop, I think, could accomplish at least some of the the. The feeling of not a black next to a hardy plank, you know, that very. Contrasting visual. So that's, that's where I would kind of lead. The improvement on the open space has been significant. Thank you very much for listening on that. And then overall, the the project as a whole has really, really come together. Ms. Mitchell, I think that you said it very, very well with it. Just getting better and better. And we have one concern, one, and that's not not usual. Lot 10, as we look at the front floor plan, and because we're not seeing the actual floor plan. The 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 front elevations that we are seeing essentially have a front room of some sort. And with these homes being that 3,000 square foot, your main living area isn't going to have your formal dining room plus your formal living room. You know, the the larger home footprint. And so usually that front area is kind of the family gathering area. And so with lot 10, it just looks like that drive comes down and its headlights directly in those windows. I don't see a a good way to shift that particular home to not get that light.
Can I, can I say something there?
Yes, please, please.
With the floor plans, we do have a split level that all the living space is in the back, for example. Actually, I'll, I'm just sitting here running them through my head. I think all of all of the floor plans, all of the living space is in the back.
So in that front area, that, you know, you can see windows through the.
There's a den.
Okay.
Or a dining room.
Got it. Got it. As I look at these, we have another neighborhood that has essentially the same thing, the light intrusion. There's only one way to get in and there's a house right there at the end. But it is a larger floor plan and the front rooms are the formal dining room and the den. And I know the family who lives there and and they're just fine. They never complain, doesn't bother them at all because their family gathering area is in the rear of the home. Mr. Foley, did you have a comment?
Yeah, we did commit in the text, if you didn't see it as well, that that there will be a screening hedge that we might, that we are are committing to planting in front of that lot. Something that can blend in with the landscaping of the home, not a wall or something to be a green. But to try to help mitigate that as well as you come down. So. So that's the initial level of of screening that we can do. So. And I know the comment about the driveways happened a couple of times. So I was able to confirm that that what's being considered right now is asphalt and it is also concrete. So as we kind of move forward, that's that's what they're they're proposing with driveways. So.
Does the development text require all of one or all of the other, or is it up to the build?
How we're approaching that is with your, I I, correct me if I'm wrong, Zach, I don't know if that shows up in your appearance code. The architectural appearance code. I'm not actually seeing, and and Jack chimed in, I don't necessarily see where we're specifying that in the text. But I I'm pretty confident that your appearance code handles a lot of the type of things as well. And we're committing to meet the requirements of that.
So the code does not restrict driving materials?
No, we, in in the text, we did not discuss, we were more concerned about width of the driveway, not what it was, the materials. So we can certainly look at that as we go with the final development plan and be ready to make that commitment with the final development plan.
I I think that would be appreciated because this is a PUD. There are a little bit more teeth that could be written into the development plan. And so, Mr. Fishman, I think that you are the one who championed the item, the idea of non-blacktop driveways. But if you want to ask fellow commissioners for support.
Yes, yes, I would. And I I would compromise since they've done such a great job. If it's, it doesn't have to be stamped concrete, but I just not blacktop. Is everybody for that?
Yeah, I got at least four. So.
Okay, great. Okay, so, yeah, at least no blacktop driveways. So.
All right. At this time, is there any other, Ms. Fox?
Before we go forward, I would like them to to take a look at the development text on the fencing. I think. You could end up with a. A fence that, I would like it reduced to four foot, whatever the standard is in the city instead of six. But I also think it's important that you kind of describe what that fencing might look like because, especially on those inner, inner. The small units, 26 through 30, it could be quite a mismatch of different kind of fencings. All along back there. And I and I think it might, it might not do you a good service to have. If you wanted a masonry base and a wrought iron top or a brick base or whatever the materials are, and you use some wrought iron to. The base to give you a masonry base to give you some privacy and a little wrought iron at the top, no higher than four foot. Or if you wanted a little split rail or something that would go with the architecture. But I think you you need to describe what those are and lay some parameters down.
I agree. We'll go ahead and commit to four-foot high fence or or. Enclosure, let's call it an enclosure. it an enclosure more or less. And then with the final development plan, we will get you some more architectural descriptions of what we're proposing.
I think that's a great idea and appreciate that. Thank you.
Zach, are you taking notes of these items for conditions?
Yes, I do have them in front of me if you would like to see them.
Thank you. Let's go to Mr. Fishman and then I'll have you present.
Okay, I, just real quickly, I, I, we, we've had this come up before since Dublin allows only a 42-foot fence. And to accomplish privacy, landscaping can augment the, those, the, those patio areas to, to, uh, accomplish privacy. So with the fence, so, and I, I, I agree with Ms. Fox that they should be all the same kind of fence so you don't have that mishmashing out there. Thank you, that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Fishman. Zach, could I have you present those conditions for both motion one and two?
Yes, give me one moment.
Thank you, sir. Ms., Mr. Foley and Ms. Mitchell, are there any other comments that you'd like to make before we run through these items?
I, I don't have anything, um, other than to, uh, you know, just thank staff, um, first and foremost, because they've, um, helped us tremendously to get to this point. And then obviously when we got to the planning commission, you all as a group have been, uh, very mindful, very thoughtful of what we're trying to achieve here. And so, um, we appreciate your candor and we appreciate your support and, and your kind words this evening. So I know that Courtney and Mike are extremely anxious to move this forward. They, they truly believe in it. As she mentioned, being residents of Ballantyne, this is, this is in their backyard and they, they, the idea of being able to bring this to the community. So, um, just a, a big thank you and hope everybody is staying safe, so.
Thank you, Mr. Foley. Could I have you review these items? So especially those last three conditions there to make sure that you are in agreement and understanding with those conditions?
Yeah, uh, I, I don't think we have any issue with those. And, uh, likewise, the condition seven, uh, that, that Zach mentioned to begin with, we don't have any issue with those or any of the other six that, that were part of this. So all 10 commissions, or all 10, uh, conditions, we are okay with.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Foley. At this time, commissioners, I am looking for two motions. Uh, the first one to recommend approval for the city council for the rezoning and preliminary development plan with these 10 conditions.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Kennedy. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Fishman.
Mr. Grimes?
Yes.
Mr. Supalack?
Yes.
Ms. Call?
Yes.
Mr. Fishman?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Schneer?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Beal. And I'm looking for a second motion to recommend approval to city council for the preliminary plat. And Zach, can you confirm this is, this has a solitary, a single condition?
Correct, it is the single condition that was originally on there.
Thank you. Drive them off.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Kennedy.
Second.
To Mr. Fishman.
Ms. Beal? Mr. Schneer?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Fishman?
Yes.
Ms. Call?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Yes.
Mr. Supalack?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Beal. Thank you, Mr. Foley, Ms. Mitchell. Uh, it, it's been wonderful spending the evening with you and, and thank you very much. It is, unfortunately, it's not incredibly frequent to feel like we are true partners with an applicant coming forward and trying to create a product that we can both be incredibly proud of. And I think this is one of those opportunities where, where you have done more than we, we could hope for. So thank you very much for being good partners with the city and with this commission and we anticipate, uh, seeing you again at the final plat.
Yeah, we appreciate that. It's, uh, appreciate everybody, having a, more from everybody is very important to us as well. So we appreciate that, uh, everyone, so.
Yes, thank you all very much for your time and, and commitment to this project.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds, and thank you, Ms. Mitchell.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too. All right, commission, we are on to cases four and five. This is Tullaro Town Homes, PIDs 273-008811 and 273-012991, PACE 20-159PDP and 20-158PPP. This is for the preliminary development plan and the preliminary plat. This application is a request for the construction of attached, single-family residential units on approximately 11 and a half acres. Being located in the Bridge Street District, uh, the code allows for the commission to move on administrative departures, waivers and a parking plan, all of which are detailed in the request for approval tonight. This application also includes a request for a recommendation for approval to the city council for a preliminary plat, and we will hear both requests simultaneously. The site is northeast of the intersection of John Shields Parkway and Village Parkway and Zone Bridge Street District Sawmill Center Neighborhood. And Nikki, sounds like you have our case for this evening, so welcome, welcome, and we'll try to take it easy on you.
Sounds good. Good evening. Uh, before you this evening is, as mentioned, a request for review and approval of a preliminary development plan. It's important to note this evening that this is within the Bridge Street District and a preliminary development plan, um, different from a planned unit development, is not asking for a rezoning. Um, the uses, uh, within the Bridge Street District are permitted and the zoning standards are set. As mentioned, the site is located northeast of the intersection of Village Parkway and John Shields Parkway and is approximately 11 acres in size. Presently, the site is comprised of two parcels and a tree line bisects the site. When looking at projects within the Bridge Street District, it's important to refer to the community plan, specifically the Bridge Street District Special Area Plan, which was adopted by city council in 2010. The Bridge Street District Special Area Plan provides recommendations for land use as well as character. The site is highlighted in black on your screen and in detail recommends townhomes and multifamily buildings for this site. The property is zoned within the Sawmill Center Neighborhood. The Sawmill Center Neighborhood has specific neighborhood standards that are applicable to it. The neighborhood standard schematic is on the right-hand side of your screen. And as you'll note, there is a gateway identified at the intersection of Village Parkway and John Shields Parkway. Neighborhood districts allow for special attention to location and character of streets, buildings, open spaces, and emphasize a coordinated mix of uses across the neighborhood district. The Bridge Street District Code is built upon a street network framework map. The site is identified in black. The street network calls for the teeing of the intersection of Tullaro Road and Village Parkway. That intersection is located beyond the bounds of this site and the right-of-way associated with a future teed intersection in that area is, uh, under the jurisdiction of the City of Dublin. As shown in March of 2020, the applicant had originally planned to incorporate that intersection improvement in partnership with the city. In preliminary conversations, the city has decided that the intersection improvements in that area will be deferred and the applicant has proceeded to design the site in a manner that is within the bounds of the site. So in review of a preliminary development plan, it's important to keep in mind, uh, what is, uh, being reviewed and approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Similar to a planned district, final development plans allow for the final review of all details associated with the project. In the preliminary development plan stage, uses are evaluated. As noted on the screen, a townhouse, a townhome dwelling is a permitted use in the Sawmill Center Neighborhood on this site. Neighborhood standards are also applicable as well as the street network map previously covered. The lots and blocks are established with the preliminary development plan as they establish the framework for development. Building layout, form and height is important to confirm during the preliminary development plan. Additionally, open space locations and amounts are denoted. Parking is the final element of the preliminary development plan. Items that are deferred to the final development plan include all building type requirements, including material, architectural details and finishes. Additionally, open space design, landscaping and lighting of the public realm will be provided at final development plan. The proposed site plan is provided on your screen. As mentioned, the site is approximately 11 acres in size and is planned to be developed with four blocks of development. Three new public rights of by establish those four blocks, which include the McCune Avenue Extension, the establishment of Grafton Street and the establishment of Hobbs Landing Drive West. Point seven acres of open space are proposed to be provided and 30 buildings are proposed to be constructed, which contain a total of 154 attached, single-family units. Here you can see the individual blocks of development. The lots and block standards provided in the code state that no single block length or one side of one block may exceed 500 feet in length and the sum total of the four sides may not exceed 1,750 feet in length. The applicant is seeking a waiver this evening for the south side of block one along John Shields Parkway as this block exceeds the requirement by five feet. This is due to the curvature of John Shields Parkway. In review of the building layout, it's important to understand the constraints of the code that establish the required building placement. Highlighted here in red are the required build zones. Required build zones for a single-family attached building type are required at five to 20 feet, meaning that a minimum five-foot step back is required, but the building must be located within 20 feet of the property line. The applicant is meeting this requirement in all locations. Front property line coverage is also required, which is the percentage of the required build zone that is occupied by a structure. In several locations across the site, the applicant is deficient in front property line coverage and a waiver is being requested. The deficiency is largely due to street connections along McCune Avenue as well as an open space provided at the intersection of John Shields and Village Parkway. Finally, corner occupation is required. This means that buildings are required to be sighted at the corner or occupy the corner. Highlighted here in green are several instances where buildings are not sufficiently occupying the corner. All of these instances are due to a desire to provide open spaces at corners and key gateway locations or, for example, as in Tullaro Road and Hobbs Landing Drive West, to facilitate tree preservation of mature trees. Lot coverage is the final item to consider in building, street and open space layout. The final lot coverage will be provided with the final development plan. The maximum impervious lot coverage permitted in this district is 70%. Open space location and amount is provided with this plan. 10 open space areas are provided, which include pocket plazas, a square and several mid-block pedestrian ways. The total required of open space in the Bridge Street District is very different in its calculation from a planned unit development district. The Bridge Street District Code requires an open space provision of 200 square feet per dwelling unit. For this development, point seven one acres of open space is required. As proposed, the applicant is providing point six four acres of open space. Staff is conditioning that the applicant work with us to provide the additional open space on site. Finally, staff is conditioning that the applicant work with us to pursue opportunities to enhance the mid-block pedestrian ways. These items that are considered enhancements could include, but are not required to include, uh, water features, art and lighting. The applicant is also seeking a waiver this evening for the proportion of open spaces.
Oh, yeah.
The proportion of open spaces is required to be at a ratio of three to one. The intent of this requirement is to provide square open spaces as opposed to linear open spaces. The linear open spaces shown on the screen primarily provide connectivity while the activated open spaces are largely square. Staff is supportive of this waiver. A parking plan is requested with this application. At the concept plan stage, the commission was very supportive of the applicant providing excess parking. The parking requirement within the Bridge Street District for townhomes is two spaces per dwelling unit. The applicant is providing two garage spaces per dwelling unit plus two additional driveway spaces. This results in 308, or yeah, 308 spaces being provided across the site, which well exceeds the 161 that would be permitted. Given the commission's support, staff is recommending approval of this provision. Additionally, in some cases, parking is shown to occupy the required build zone. In these instances, staff is conditioning that the parking be screened at 100% opacity to be detailed at the final development plan. Building type requirements are included in the zoning code. These building type requirements are highly prescriptive and intended to provide parameters to ensure high-quality development. The single-family attached building type permits buildings that are a story and a half to four stories in height. This application is proposed at three stories in height, which is within the requirement. Materials are also provided, which include brick, stone and glass. In many cases, the commission has previously been supportive of thin brick as a substitution for full-depth brick. The applicant is seeking a waiver to permit thin brick as a primary material. Staff is supportive of this waiver. Story heights are also provided in the code. The intent here is to ensure a minimum story height on the first floor and subsequent floors above. The requirement is 10 to 12 feet in this instance and the applicant is proposing 9.5 feet. Since this request is within 10% of the requirement, this is an administrative departure and not a waiver. Staff is supportive of this. Finally, the form of the building is an important consideration with the preliminary development plan. The form is largely attributed to the roof. At the concept plan, the commission requested that a more traditional roofline be provided in response to the Greystone Mews Neighborhood. The applicant has revised the design to provide more traditional materials and a pitched roof. The applicant is providing additional details along the roofline to mimic a flat roof, providing transition between Greystone Mews and Tullaro Flats. The flat detail on the roof does require a waiver. Staff is supportive of that waiver. Additionally, staff is recommending disapproval of a waiver to permit an uninterrupted ridge line. In detail, shown on the screen, you'll notice here the ridge line is- In detail, shown on the screen, you'll notice here the ridge line is consistent and no architectural features are present. Therefore, staff is recommending the applicant continue to work with us prior to final development plan to provide more variation in the height and form of the roofline, further distinguishing each unit as a for-sale townhome versus an apartment building. The elevations shown on your screen have progressed from the concept plan and you'll notice here provide significantly more warm-toned primary building materials such as brick. Finally, the applicant has provided side elevations that wrap the corner with brick as well as enhanced elevations for high-impact lots. Staff believes the applicant can work to further refine these items prior to final development plan's submittal. The applicant is seeking feedback from the commission this evening on architecture so those comments can be included in the final development plan's submittal. Additionally, the applicant has provided a tentative color scheme. These palettes will be considered by the commission at the final development plan. However, the applicant is welcoming comments and direction from the commission. Finally, the applicant has included a building variety plan. This is intended to ensure a diversity of building types across the development and ensure the homogeneous nature of Tuller Flats is not repeated. The applicant will continue to refine this for the commission's approval with the final development plan. The applicant's landscape architect has also provided conceptual landscape character for the public realm, realizing that the public realm is an integral portion of the Bridge Street District. There will be opportunities that will be detailed for each of these key open spaces with special attention to the gateway location at Village Parkway and John Shields Parkway. The landscape character, entry feature or public art, hard surfaces and furnishings, as well as screening for vehicular use areas and utilities are provided on your screen. Additionally, the applicant is seeking a recommendation of approval to city council for a preliminary plot. These will be for-sale condominiums and therefore four lots for development are proposed to be established, along with three public rights of way and easements for utilities. As detailed previously, two administrative departures are requested. Staff is recommending approval of both. Six waiver reviews are requested. Staff is recommending approval of all waivers with the exception of waiver four. A parking plan is also requested. Staff is recommending approval of this parking plan, consistent with the direction provided by the Planning and Zoning Commission. In summary, the recommendations are provided as listed on the screen. The commission is asked to make five motions this evening on the five portions of this application. In summary, those are the administrative departures, waivers, parking plan and preliminary development plan, and finally, the preliminary plot. Be happy to answer any questions the commission may have this evening. The applicant team is here as well to provide additional detail.
Thank you, Nikki. From the applicant is here.
Good evening. My name is Aaron Underhill. I'm with Underhill &amp; Hodge. I'm an attorney and I'm representing Pulte Homes tonight. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, Mr. Underhill. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you. Also joining us is Matt Callahan with Pulte, our architect Keith Filipkowski, who is also with Pulte, and Greg Chilag of Edge, our planner.
Welcome. Mr. Underhill, did you have a presentation or a statement that you'd like to make to the commission before we jump into questions?
Yes, thank you very much. I wanted to thank Nikki and the staff. We've been having regular meetings with them. I think her very comprehensive report and the staff report you got really shines a light on how complicated it is to develop in Bridge Street and there's been a lot of work by a lot of people that have gone into this. We're appreciative of the city's role in that and, you know, we do have a site here that has a lot going on around it and that combined with the fact that we have a very large code to deal with has lent itself to a very complex project. But I wanted to take a step back and go through a little history here. So, back in early March of this year, we came to the commission with our concept plan and that was approved four to nothing. There were some members absent at that meeting. We were then, because of the teed intersection that was proposed and that frankly is called for in the Bridge Street Plan, we had and other applicants have had the same thing that they've had to present to the council, which is a development agreement that would allow for a land swap and the teeing off of that intersection and also some funding availability from TIFs in order to do that. That really didn't get any legs and it was determined that really the simpler thing was to deal with the property we have here at hand. And so that led us back to the drawing board and has been part of our delay in getting back to you is to design a project that doesn't take that tee intersection into account. So, we're here tonight with the preliminary development plan and of course, we've got the final development plan to come. But I think all of this really lends itself to what I believe to be the developer's point of view in Bridge Street, which is the Bridge Street Code and its review process is its own beast, but it really does allow for and provides for an iterative process that allows a project to evolve over time. So, if you'll indulge me for a moment, I'll make an analogy of this being a football game and with four quarters to it. And the first quarter being the concept plan that we went through with you. The second period in this instance being any development agreement matters that we go to council and now here we are at the preliminary development plan. So I think my point in making that analogy is that we're going to be back for the fourth quarter. We'll see how this all turns out, but we'd like to get, we'd like to move the ball down the field a little bit here tonight and establish some things where we're right, where we could improve and, you know, come back to you with all of these final details that, some of which we're looking for feedback on this evening, as Nikki mentioned in her proposal, but aren't necessarily a requirement to be considered tonight. So, we did really take into account in great detail all of your comments, especially as they relate to architecture. This is my, talk about a football game, I think this is my third ballgame here on this site. The first one being as a part of the Tuller Flats project, which was actually the first project to really be pursued in Bridge Street some six, seven years ago. And then you'll all recall, most of you, I think, were around Graziano Project, which was for more of a senior living element. And every step of the way, I've learned a little something, but I think the difference here is Pulte has really been open to hearing and taking in your feedback, both from this group and from the staff all along the way without coming in with a finished product. And what we're doing here this evening is here again, trying to move a little closer to your approval. We're not all the way there yet with details, but we feel like tonight's really a pivotal moment for us to bring this further than anything else has come before you on this site. So, you know, what we really took away from your last meeting was, you know, some eight months ago, was the product, which is permitted under zoning and is compliant with comprehensive planning documents for the area, was well-received in terms of the use, generally its layout, of course, comments and caveats to that. The layout, we've all, I guess, along with the staff, and I think the commission recognized this last time, in light of the fact that we have three existing public street rights of way, we have a development to the west of us, we're really in a box here and staying within that box and within the bounds of the code has been a real effort, but I think we have largely done that and I think that was recognized the last time around. Architecture, we expect to be a lot of the conversation this evening. And what we heard from you, from this group at the concept plan stage was to make sure that we were differentiating this project from Tuller Flats. I think in and of itself, it does that in many respects, given that it's a for-sale product. It's, these are self-parked units, et cetera, but we were asked in terms of designing the buildings to not make them feel, I don't mean this as a discredit to Tuller Flats, but not so monolithic and boxy feeling. So we have moved towards a more traditional design and we, you know, that includes pitched roofs and roof terraces we have incorporated on the fronts of the buildings as an option. And those will be present. We don't mean to be that that's an option for the end user necessarily, but we will be incorporating that into some of our designs. So, I guess to wrap this up, you know, I think our architect and our site planner have done a great job addressing your comments. I'm sure that we have not gotten there in all regards, but the beautiful part about, although this is a lengthy, time-consuming and expensive process, the beauty of it is that we are only starting the second half of the game here. And what we'd like to establish tonight is getting the approvals and the waivers and the departures that Nikki outlined. We are accepting of the conditions and will agree to those. And, you know, to the extent that, you know, the items that Nikki pointed out that are relevant in terms of architecture tonight are building layouts, forms and heights, we would, we would like to get those things sort of ironed out this evening, but we would also like to get your clear feedback on what we can improve on, if anything, as we move forward to final development plan and final design. So, with that being said, you know, I'm not going to have anybody else from our team present here, but we're all available for a Q and A and I expect that those with their particular area of expertise will chime in where needed as we go along. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Underhill. All right, commission, looking to you for questions at this time. Questions for staff or questions for the applicant? Mr. Supulak, you want to start us off?
Yeah, question for staff, actually. So, I guess I'm going to the dead ends and I think there's four of them in total in this development. Is there any reason we are keeping those streets from connecting through to the more major thoroughfare? It looks like they all connect on, is it McCune Avenue, potentially?
Yeah, definitely. So we actually encouraged the applicant to disconnect those streets, which sounds contrary to some of the planning that has gone on in the Bridge Street District. However, the Bridge Street District is really a very, very fine balance and one of the other planning principles of the Bridge Street District is to have uninterrupted street frontages that allow for pedestrian circulation in a safe manner. So instead of prioritizing vehicular circulation, which is more than adequate on the site with the other connections, staff was attempting to prioritize pedestrian circulation and safety.
Got it. Thank you.
Ms. Kennedy?
Hi, Ms. Martin. I noticed that you called out specifically in your presentation, the items that staff is in support of. Can you just give us a quick recap of the items that staff is not necessarily in support of, just to give us the quick hit list again?
Yeah, sure thing. So, there is one waiver that staff is unsupportive of and is recommending disapproval for. That is the waiver that would be required if we were to permit the roofline as shown today. That is a consistent ridge line, which provides very little differentiation between units. Staff thinks that it is key to differentiate these single-family units and provide more diversity across the development. So that is first and foremost. Additionally, staff is conditioning that the applicant provide the total amount of required open space. The applicant is just shy of meeting that requirement and through some creative site design, we believe that they can meet that prior to final development plan. Additionally, staff is conditioning that the applicant work with us to ensure that the, the final architectural details and materials on street-facing facades meet the intent of the Bridge Street District. That condition is that the applicant provide a minimum of 80% of primary permitted building materials on street-facing facades. Those are really, really important, particularly at the gateway location at the intersection of Village Parkway. Some of the other conditions are more minor in nature, but will ensure that as we work toward final development plan, the applicant has a clear direction, both in terms of the site and architecture, to ensure it's meeting our expectations.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. I appreciate the double check on the items I had taken notes on. Thank you.
Sure thing.
Ms. Box?
I was not present at the first at the concept plan, so I have a couple of questions. I did go back and look at it online. Could you tell me, sort of summarize what it was that the commission, because I don't have that in my, in the information I have here, what the commission suggested of the, of the applicant during the concept when it comes to design or any of the, any of the really strong suggestions?
Yeah, absolutely. So at the concept plan, the applicant provided two architectural concepts. There was an option A and an option B. One was slightly more modern and provided some of the forms that you see elsewhere in the Bridge Street District, like Tuller Flats, and one was significantly more traditional. The applicant got direction from the commission that a pitched roof was the preferred solution and has worked to blend options A and B into a cohesive design. Additionally, the commission encouraged the applicant to activate the street-facing facades. Initially, the rooftop terraces were only shown to the rear of the unit facing the auto courts. Now, the rooftop terraces are provided facing the principal frontage streets with select units having the option to have them rear-facing. The commission also encouraged that the applicant further refined the design to make sure the auto-oriented areas were minimized from view.
Okay. Any comments on the open spaces that were, the layout was quite a bit different in the original design. It was more of a, I'm looking at it online because unless you have it to pull up, do you have the original?
I do have.
That would be a good idea.
Okay.
Helpful for those who weren't there. Thank you.
To answer your question, there were some comments regarding the open spaces and there was a lot of focus on the gateway location at the intersection of John Shields, realizing that that would need to be further developed moving forward.
Now, did that meet the open space requirement? Did that design meet the open space requirement?
This design did meet the open space requirement. However, it's important to remember that the area of the site was point six acres larger, which provided for that second pocket park, which now due to the curvature of the street is no longer able to be accommodated.
All right, thank you.
Certainly.
Looking back, looking back to the commission for additional questions, either for staff or for the applicant. All right. Just a question, Nikki, on... All right. Just a question Nikki on open space, the, the proportion of open space, the three to one comment. Can you bring up a drawing and point out the open spaces that would fall into this waiver?
Yes, certainly. I mean, just one moment.
Thank you. So Ms. Fox, back to your question about the original, and I had reviewed the minutes from that meeting. And we did talk significantly about the open space. There was one comment that one of the, the main features in the open space in concept number one was the, a very nice mailbox enclosure. And so there was comment around amenities and activation and, and that sort of thing. Mr. Supalak had quite a few comments in that. I don't know if you have those, those minutes available to you, but he does talk a bit about that in addition to the actual facade and then the architectural materials of the building. So Nikki, back to you.
Great. So shown on the screen here is the open space plan. The open spaces that meet the required proportions are the largest open space, which is the square, the gateway location, as well as the open space at the intersection of Hobbs Landing and John Shields Parkway. The open spaces that don't meet this provision are the more linear open spaces, which are these mid block pedestrian ways. Staff is conditioning that the applicant provide additional enhancements in these mid block pedestrian ways to really counteract the linear form. And subject to compliance with the condition to provide additional amenities, staff is supportive of the waiver to modify the shape.
Thank you, Nikki. Other questions? Ms. Kennedy, back to you.
More I was thinking about. Nikki, you had mentioned the thin brick. Can you tell us in the surrounding areas if thin brick is used as a material, just to give us some context?
Yeah, absolutely. Almost every building constructed within Bridge Park uses thin brick. Particularly given the height of those buildings, full depth brick becomes very heavy. So all of those buildings use thin brick. And I believe in some instances, Teller Flats also uses thin brick.
For the reference point, appreciate it.
Sure thing.
All right, Commissioner, any other questions at this time? All right, let's move on to the fun part. Let's get to comments. Mr. Supalak, do you want to kick us off this evening?
Sure. I guess I'm gonna, I'm gonna run at first and foremost, I'm gonna run at the dead ends and sort of generally say, I, I think it's personal preference. I think it's sort of problematic to have them, unfortunately. I understand the, the sort of desire to, on behalf of the city to have this quote unquote more pedestrian, pedestrian feel to it, but you know, given that this is the entire Bridge Street area is a little more of an urban, quasi-urban vibe anyways, and these are townhomes, I don't think it's a problem to, to cross a couple of extra streets. I think it's a sort of goofy circulation problem for this site if they are not there. So food for thought. I, I do think kudos on the adjustment. Obviously that corner in, that corner out is substantially changes how you address this site. I, I think your adjustments over there are are a good good reconciliation of that. I also think there's a few sort of, if somewhere in my commentary on the previous sort of go around, there was some very goofy corner conditions that I do not think, I do not think were yet carefully considered. I, I still think you guys have ways to go on that. The, the architecture you had in the previous, previous submission, photo imagery of some of the architecture you've put in place before. It's more compelling than, you know, I mean, it just jumps off the page more than I think the, the flat drawings are at present. But I, I do have confidence that that's sort of in large part a, at least with regard to the front elevations, in large part a sort of interpretation problem of the, of the medium, the drawing versus the photo medium. I, I will say the corner conditions, I still think there's opportunity. And I know you guys are probably trying to Pulte, in particular, you're probably trying to market, I'm going to say probably keep a lot of the units reasonably similar, right? So there's a, a finite amount of variations on the units, right? But I do think they're the end cap in a lot of cases, specifically the end unit, let's say, I guess I'm not certain which, which street it is, the end cap nearest the pocket park up by John Shields and Village Parkway. For instance, those two end units want, they don't want the standard end architecture. They want something more, right? Some massing that comes off of them, maybe a, maybe a two story, a two story extension somehow that starts to, that starts to address that corner condition considerably different. There's a few obvious, obvious places for things like that, but I think, you know, you're hearing this and given, given time to sort of digest it further, that your architects and designers will sort of think through that very, very well. I agree with, I'll say this, I agree with the ridge line holding, disapproval of the ridge line. The top ridge line, if it sort of bounced a little bit from one unit to the next, would do a lot for this architecture. That's, that is the only sort of robust variation you might experience from the back architecture. The, the back facade in particular is a little bit, is a little bit wanting. It's common for some buildings like this that are garage and sort of internal court facing. But that ridge line adjustment will be fruitful once, once it sort of gets adjusted into this mix.
Thank you, Mr. Supalak. Mr. Fishman, do you want to go next? You're muted, Warren.
Yeah, I, I, I agree pretty much with Mr. Supalak. I, I would like to see these buildings look as residential as possible. When I drove over there yesterday, there, there's a lot of contemporary apartments there. It's, it's, it's pretty jammed. And, and I think that the comments I've heard as this project has progressed, as boy, it all looks pretty much the same. And so we have a chance now with a different builder to, and, and having these units be separate sole units to, to look architecturally like attached single family homes. And because of the height of them, that, that's, they certainly don't look like traditional single family homes, but all we can do with the roofs and, 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 and the architecture, I, I would appreciate seeing that in the next, our, our next quarter, I guess, as we're, we're calling it, to, to, to really emphasize that we don't want another taller flats. We want something that really looks a lot different. The other thing is green space. I, I would really like to see, I know they want a little bit of variance on the, on the green space. I'd like to see more green space if possible, because as you, as I drove around there yesterday, I mean, it, it looks pretty darn dense. And, and, and when we spent two years developing this, we thought that the pocket parks and the open space would, would, would take away from that. And I think that we really have to, to make sure we get as much green space as we possibly can and, and make these buildings look as residential as we can. That's all my comments for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fishman. Ms. Fox, do you want to go next?
Christina can. She has the hand up. That's fine.
Thank you. Thanks, Ms. Fox. Just going back to the development statement in support of the preliminary development plan and preliminary plat that was provided in our information packet. I was just rereading some of our prep materials and the final sentence, the final, final paragraph says that Pulte Group submits its plan and furtherens of its goal of providing a unique product type. So the word unique product type jumped out to me. Skip to the end. The buildings will, will create vibrancy along the public street and be additive to the visual character of the area. So if we look at these comments, I think they're in, unfortunately, they're in conflict with some of the, the waivers that are being requested tonight. And specifically the waivers that Nikki was able to, to touch on quickly for us at, at the beginning of the meeting. So I'm just going to call out the three that I'm not in support of, and that's the roof line waiver. It doesn't seem to support unique product type and vibrancy as well as additive to visual character. The open space, I'm also not in support of the waiver there. I ditto with what Warren said earlier. It's a very dry, sterile area of town. There's not a lot of green. It's very, it reminds me of like communist Eastern Bloc type country. So I'm, I'm excited to see some, like you said, Warren, some more residential, some more different type of architecture there. And that's what the code is aiming to do. So some of these things that are out of line with code, I'm, I'm just not in support of. So I'll, I'll leave it at that for right now.
Thank you, Ms. Kennedy. Back to you, Ms. Fox.
Well, you know, this is my first look at it. So when it comes to, from the planning and zoning commissions, the applicant coming before us. So for me, I think as always, I will always go back to the streetscape. I think the, what I'm gathering and why I asked about what the commission recommended in the concept plan was that you were looking for something different, something more in a traditional way. The, the first concept to me was more traditional than this one. It seemed to have more mixture of facade materials and, and more as, as Mr. Supalak would say, negative positive spaces, architect speak. But I think what we're all looking for is an absolute different look that we don't have in Bridge Street now. And also to be absolutely sure that on our principal frontage streets, when we do have terminal vistas and gateways, that they actually are have an interesting look to them. We just don't set aside a green area and call that a gateway or don't really think hard on what that terminal vista is. For me, the architecture needs to be totally unique and different, something you don't see. But I also understand that you're, you want to keep these at a price point in the mid 300s, which I applaud you for, because I think that we do need some affordable, more affordable units in the Bridge Park area. I think it's important though, that it still has that high quality look that we're looking for. So as I was looking through the preliminary development plan criteria, I had some suggestions and I, I, and looking at the facades on these, I just felt like it didn't, it didn't have a timelessness that we would hope that would last for 30 or 40 years. And if you were asking, if we asked you to go more traditional, I guess I'm talking really traditional. So Nikki, one of the things I, I sent was some, some pictures only not to design, not to give you a design, but to help you understand what I think we're looking for when it comes to, at least I'm looking for, I won't speak for the others. What I'm looking for at Invigorate, the streetscape. So Nikki, can you bring these forward? Now, this is a design that has a very interesting front door to it. It's traditional. This could, this could just simply be stucco or inexpensive materials. But the sidewalk and the landscaping ask you to come to that front door. The way that these, that the front of the building faces, it, it moves. It isn't flat across and it, it has a lot of detail in the way it uses the materials. Could you go to the next slide? This is interesting. This is a very large building. It's actually one large building, but from the front, you would not know that those buildings were just one big, large building. It actually has a flat roof. But from the front, it has interest at the main level, interesting tall linear windows at the main level, which really invite you and make you feel like this has great quality. The second level, the windows are smaller and there are more of them. And the third level, the windows are a different shape with dormers. Yet there is a, a shared wall in between. If you go, I think you can kind of see it if you, I don't know if you can make that any larger Nikki, between the chimneys there. That's just simply a shared wall. But each one of these looks uniquely individual, extremely inviting and would not be expensive to do in a traditional manner, I don't believe. So I think that's, to me, that's a different look. If you could go on to the next one, Nikki? Okay, this is also traditional, but as you'll notice, even though the materials don't change all that much, there is quite a bit of interest in the detailing of the entrance to the front door. The way the, the, the small Pocket Park, Pocket Park really does make the building seem like it's a place that you would want to linger. It has those elements and the windows are different. They're larger at the bottom. They're detailed deeply with some wood or dark, darker materials or paint. The, the second floor, totally different than the first. And then dormers at the top with a variety of roof lines. Next one, Nikki? Once again, this is an all brick building, but because of the way they utilize the, the front porches and the stoops, tried to individualize the bay windows, created a little bit of an interest on the, on the front lawn there where you feel like you've got an interesting thing to go out to, or you, you might even sit on the steps and have a cup of coffee in the morning before you go to work. Columns where you wouldn't expect them around doorways. Those are the kinds of elements I think that we're looking for. Something that creates a traditional timelessness, totally different than what's in the Bridge Street District at the, at now. Windows that have decent sills that have depth to them, that have good trim, detailing in the brick, a variety of doorway architectural design features that, that just make you want to go and knock on that door. So I feel as if that's, that's what's missing in this particular architectural. And I think you were trying, from what I gather, to move in that direction, but maybe at least from my point of view, when we say different, we're talking extreme, I'm talking extremely different. This is a look that I think is timeless, different and would be extremely marketable, done in a way that probably could be extremely affordable as well. So I'm not, I'm not partic, I liked the, the plan originally where all the the open spaces were because they actually, the buildings focused towards, they, they faced them, where now they seem to be just put in places where you had room for them. So those are my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Fox. Ms. Kennedy?
Ms. Call, can I just, touching on Jane's comments, that may, may have been more appropriately placed at the preliminary or concept review. I mean, just generally speaking, right? I mean, I think at this point, the architecture is is moving towards a more solidified path. I don't know if there's anything that, that can be pulled from that necessarily. I just want to put that out for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Kennedy. Mr. Schnur?
Thinking about this, it takes me back, actually a comment that my, one of my adult sons who came back, has lived in Boston, San Francisco, came back to visit, not this year of course, but previous and driving up there, somebody who's spent a lot of time at Dublin AMC, as we all did, and sort of like, what happened? You're, I won't say victim, that's a little too strong, but you're putting a development in what I think we would all acknowledge is not the most shining star in Dublin or Bridge Park. And when you drive up John Shields and you end up in what may be the abandoned, probably going to be the abandoned AMC theater. You know, I think we're looking, perhaps unfairly looking to you for, you know, to create something better than what, to improve what, what already exists there. And I'm not sure that that's fair. On the other hand, you sort of have to play the, you know, play the hand that you're dealt and that is the character of the neighborhood. I certainly would echo Jane's, you know, point of view. I certainly would echo Jane's, you know, point of view. And, you know, also I think we do have an issue with sort of where we are, how far along here. So tickering at the edges. I thought we talked about the roof, the ridge line before. And so I guess I was surprised that that wasn't, that there wasn't sort of more modification. I guess I'd like to hear from the applicant. Are you amenable to that? Because that is one thing that looks like it could, you know, could change the character somewhat. But I agree. I mean, it's, it's a great, it's a great asset, an improvement on that area. And I'm not sure how much more we should reasonably expect for you to be the salvation of what I personally think is not the best part of the, part of our development, Bridge Park.
Thank you, Mr. Schneer. Mr. Underhill, you're muted.
Of course I am. I'll never learn. Thank you for those comments and I do think there's some truth to that statement. I will, I'm going to let Keith, our architect, jump in here. I do think the changes in the ridge lines do bring some difficulties in design, but they, they could be overcome. I think he'll have to really roll up his sleeves on that. Ms. Fox, I believe that, you know, some of those projects you showed are absolutely beautiful and some of those elements could be incorporated in there. Those are obviously expensive units, but I do think there are things we may be able to do to activate the streetscape. And given the stage we're in, I think that's very appropriate to try to incorporate into the, the kind of last time we designed this and bring it back to you. And I think Keith could shed some light on that as well.
Yeah. You know, first, let me just reiterate, like, you know, what I said last time, that I'm very excited to be part of this project. We are very open minded to the comments you guys are giving us. And in some cases here, we may not be too far along. I mean, I think the point here, getting back to the approval we're seeking, is to get an overall approval of the form and mass. That's where we're at with the project. Although we have worked some of the specific feedback that we got the first time around, there is no doubt areas for improvement still. And we are amenable to the roof line being adjusted. The way in which we get there is yet to be determined, but we understand the concept of what you're asking and why you're asking. And, you know, I tend to agree with that. I think it'll help break up the building and the scale of it. And then some of the other commentary with respect to, you know, some of these other finer details that we hope you'll appreciate when we bring it back to the final development plan. You know, more focus on the front entryways, perhaps. Some additional architectural details, you know, like we introduced the Juliet balcony on the side elevation. Perhaps there are some other accent materials that we can, or projections or box bays or whatever that may end up being on the principal front elevation. And we're absolutely open to that feedback. So I hope that's helpful. I don't know what those answers are at the very moment, but you guys have given me some good ideas with the graphic, with the pictures you provided and just the commentary in general.
Nikki?
Yeah, I, I think this is all a very timely discussion regarding architecture. And I did just want to clarify that the preliminary development plan is an opportunity for the Planning Commission to impose any conditions or provide final direction to the applicant to incorporate. So if the commission was looking for specific traditional elements or materials, now would be the time to condition it. So if there are any architectural elements that are not, not appropriate, certainly don't feel like you are tethered to those this evening. Those can be refined based on your direction.
Thank you, Nikki. Mr. Grimes?
I think this is a lot better. With a lot of the public space, I like that. I like to pass through the linear forms. I, I, I'm in favor of all the position the staff has taken on the waivers, including the, the one disapproval, because I like that ridge line to be broken up. I, you know, when I come down from the AMC and you're looking across that field, you, you want some variation because you're going to, coming from that higher elevation down the hill, down Shields Parkway. So I think it's going to be real important, not only for this development, but whatever happens to the east of that someday, if something happens to AMC and they redevelop that next part of the, of that plaza above there. I'm trying to get my head around the, the internal drives as Mr. Superak was marking, made, made remarks about. Well, I just, you know, I'd hate to see if they get those loaded up and you try to navigate in and around there. I, I don't know whether there's, it's just the scale or whether there's really going to be enough room to not hit your neighbor's car when you're backing up or turning around or whatever in there. So I don't know if that is, is an issue waiting to happen or not. But I think with the pedestrian flow through there with the pass-throughs, that, that makes this more in tune with what we're wanting. I think that those corner parks on John Shields are really important. What you do with them as a, as a signature piece for inviting people from outside to mingle with your residents or vice versa. I, I, hopefully there'll be something that's really worthwhile. More so maybe at the gateway at the top on Village Parkway. I don't know what you have for final plans there, but it will, it will be interesting to see if you can really jazz that up some. So that's all I have to say on the project. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Grimes. Mr. Fishman?
Yeah, I, I agree with everything Jane said. And, and I think that we really need to look hard at improving the, the front elevations. You can do that with, as Ms. Fox said, with, with brick walks and, and pillars and deviation in the, in the facade and so on. I, as I drove there, I, I felt a little sad that it looked so much, those, the residential there looks so dense and so much like office, so much like commercial space. And as I said, we have an opportunity now with, with Polte to, to make something that looks residential and, and, and rich looking and different. And I think that, that we're not asking you to change the complete architecture, but, but when you add things like brick walks and, and pillars and some deviation in the front of the buildings, I think that can make a huge difference. And so I'm, I'm really counting on seeing something like that. Because as I said, I was, I was real disappointed when I drove there and with, with my drawings and, and thought, oh, here, this looks like another office building. So I would really, I'm really looking forward to that. And I, and I really appreciate Ms. Fox bringing those pictures because I, that's exactly what I had in my mind when I drove through there, that that's something we need, something like that, that, that Mr. Edwards built in the short north. And, and not that you, you're going to say that it was much more expensive and so on, but, but, but those kind of amenities that aren't necessarily expensive can make the, the project look much more residential, like attached, single-family homes. And so I'm really counting on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fishman. Yes, Keith?
Just, if I may, I was just going to remind too, you know, Mark, Mark Suplak had a very worthy comment in that, you know, you guys are looking at two dimensional elevations and perhaps I've done myself a disservice by not being able to provide three dimensional renderings for this particular meeting. But, you know, in the built environment, I just don't want you guys to lose sight of the fact that we are showing units within buildings staggering from front to back. We've got varying parapet heights. There are elements, box bays and what have you. There are many elements within the building that may not be reading as loud and clear as I would like them to read for you tonight. I don't want you to lose sight of that. I understand the roof line and we will definitely work on that. But I want you to hopefully understand that aspect as well from a three dimensional vantage point.
And I believe, Keith, that's a great point. I believe when we come back with the final development plan, it will be incumbent upon us to show you some three, three dimensional renderings with sort of not looking straight into, onto the building, but maybe from an angle to demonstrate to you how that will look and that'll be part of our next submittal.
Keith and Aaron, can I also reiterate, I'm going back actually to comments, I think I made to you all the last go around. I might also remind, remind us all that vertical, what is this? Vertical landscaping, like the forethought about vertical landscaping and what that does to something like that. Even in, even in some of Jane's imagery, there was really vertical juniper trees going up and helping to start to set up that distinct separation of, of some of those units and masses. Like that was all intentional. And of course, we all know that's, that's a step you guys haven't done yet. But if that's integrated in your next step as a sort of holistic, how are people going to walk this, experience it, walk up to it? I, I think all of those things will start to, start to aid in, you know what I mean? Chaping, shaping this really well from the streets.
Yeah, that's a, that's a very creative suggestion and one that really doesn't bring a whole ton of cost with it as compared to other things. But thank you for that.
Ms. Fox?
Yeah, you know, and, and I apologize because I wasn't here for the first time, but, but I, my hope is that, that in this, in, as you work through this, Keith, and, and, and try to, to bring some of these suggestions forward. My hope is that, that this building won't do what Warren says he feels like it might do, look like every other block in Bridge Street. This, the, the rectangular shapes of the facade is, is everywhere in Bridge Park. It's everywhere. And one of the things that I'm hoping that you'll do and, and, and I guess I'll just, you know, kind of call it out on the windows, like as we talk about facade materials, we really do need to get a variation in design style and shape. There needs to be, when you use thin brick, then, then frequently you may not be able to, frequently that makes the, the window flat. You know, how do you get some dimension, some trim around these windows so that that, from the street face, they have a quality feel to them? That trim detail, that color variation, that shape variation, that makes a big difference. I also think for people who are going to buy these, they don't want their unit to look exactly like the other unless all of them that look the same look beautiful, the same. But if you're going to separate them out, then give them the detail so that each one feels like they own have their own special unit. And that requires at the doorway that it, and, and I'm not saying that the architecture that I showed you is a design that I want. It's just images of how traditional elements can bring forward a warmth and a feel that you want to come to that doorway. And we're looking for something more traditional that way, more warm, that breaks up the monotony of the contemporary urban look that's everywhere. And I think it's affordably done, you know, it's just a matter of style. I was kind of hoping that you have, I had talked to Planning about this earlier. If you could, I don't know if you can reduce the depth, but if you could reduce the depth of the, of the unit by four foot and, and really get the opportunity to create an entrance way that had a stoop or a porch so that if someone wanted to come out and sit and have a cup of coffee and watch the people walk to work, that would be a place you could do it. Right now, the, the front doorways are, and I know you're not there yet, but it's, you know, it's, it isn't the kind of a doorway that one would, would want to do that with, with the design you have. I think it's real important that each unit, as I said, is individual. I had another, I had another suggestion. I really like the balconies. I think the balcony activity is wonderful. I'm glad that you, you brought something forward like that. I'd like to see it a bit more traditional and in the back, where the balcony line goes straight across along the back. Could you consider any kind of covering? Can you consider staggering those? Can you consider a, a different change in elevation and the height so that one person's not looking over at the next person? So that each has a bit of a privacy based on a different height of that balcony? I mean, really, you could look all the way down to six buildings and everybody would look like they're just sitting on a, you know, a very, a flat plane, I guess is what I'm saying. I'd like to see that to be usable enough that people felt comfortable to go out there and have that cup of coffee and not feel like they're looking right next door to the, the other guy. Onings are always a good idea. I think it's something to give a softness to the street if you're looking at a traditional element. I think that would be good. The gateway location and the terminal vista, to me, are really important. And, and I would like to see you open up those little pocket park walkthroughs if you're going to, if it's going to be laid out like that. I, I prefer the other one where you had a little larger space. You could actually, it had enough volume to look like it mattered. Those little tiny spaces are simply just walkways and no one will ever use them as a park. They're just too tiny. I've seen them all over Bridge Park where you squeeze them in between buildings, but they seem a little bit not a place you want to stay. It's like you want to get through it and you just don't want to be there any longer. So I'd really like to see you work a little bit more on, on spaces that, that actually people had a comfort level in. But the terminal vista in the architecture might be some vertical element that, that you notice as you come down the street and that building is a little bit different. I'm, yeah, I, for me, I don't feel, I don't feel like we're there yet, but, but like I said, I was not here in, in the first concept plan.
Thank you, Ms. Fox. In the spirit of efficiency, I'm just going to go down my list. Thank you for the brick addition. I think that the, the facade has been beefed up for that. The side elevation also looks much, much better. The more traditional roof, roof line introduction, I agree with, and I think that that recommendation is well founded. I also support the parking addition. I believe our numbers were a little bit off. I think the number we presented was 308, but a total of four per location. So I think we were off by a factor of two. So, so thank you for all of those changes. Now, because we're in preliminary plat, really what we're concentrating on is the form factor, the building footprint, you know, the, the broad strokes. And we'll get into the details in the, in the final plat. However, a lot of these things play together. So we talked about density and intensity. I think this is a good use of density. I do think it's a little too intense. So talking about front facades and pulling those back a little bit to kind of have that warm inviting feel, I, I'm supportive of that. The solid roof line, breaking that up into that staggered roof line, I appreciate. The open space recommendation to fit the open space here, I think by bringing those front doors in, you kind of open things up naturally. I've never been very supportive of using a walkway that is a required walkway for other purposes as qualification for, for open space because it's a walkway. It has to be there anyway. And so, you know, planting the, the three feet of sod on either side and saying it's a usable open space has never been, you know, something that I championed in the past. So I am very supportive of the requirement to fit the open space within the envelope, but I am not supportive of the waiver of the three to one qualification for open space. The building footprint, we talked about that with the front entrance area. And then one recommendation for the back half of the building where you have those patio terraces, those types of things. I think they're beautiful and I think they're a huge amenity to the owners of those locations. Although we do have a lot of sun during the summer and a lot of rain, well, well, a lot of moisture 12 months of the year. So I would recommend investigating or looking at some type of a cover of, over those so that they're more usable for more months of the year. And I am very supportive of the 80% primary materials. So that, that's kind of the sum of my comments. I think that the product looks significantly better. It wasn't a bad product ever, but it looks better. And Mr. Underhill, you talked about moving, moving the yardage. And I think we, we just got, you know, a down and we're ready for, you know, a first down and we're ready for the next iteration. I do want to highlight though, you know, Ms. Kennedy talked earlier where concept plan, we don't like to switch gears on you. It's not halftime. We're not throwing, you know, opposite direction on the field. So what we do want to make sure though is we're giving you So, what we do want to make sure though is we're giving you clear direction and that iterative improvement so that we get to a final product that again, we're all very proud to have had our part in. So as we're looking at the size of those blocks and those types of things, I think that there are improvements. I think you've heard from the rest of the commission, and while we may not be perfectly aligned and you may not walk away saying, "Everybody agreed that we should do X," I think you understand where the commission is going. And then my final thought is just on the streets that terminate without a connection onto the other major roads. If that's being utilized kind of as that pedestrian thoroughfare, which I think is completely acceptable and encouraged, especially given the location of this development, some type of, Mr. Supalak brought up the vertical greenery, some type of vertical greenery, you know, at the end of the terminus, some big planters that have the arbor veda or the junipers that go vertical but have the six-foot walkway in between so that cars aren't tempted to drive through, maybe five foot, cars aren't tempted to drive through, but it is inviting, it is enticing, it has the vertical, it's not a straight view into these driveway, 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 even though you do your best and you change the elevation and that front alignment of the units, and that's appreciated as well. But something that is, not a complete screen, Mr. Supalak, I think you, you get where I'm going with that.
Yes, seclusion.
Yes.
Make private, private.
Yes. So it's still walkable, there's still connection, but it's not, you're inviting everyone to look at everyone's driveway and that's the view from the street. Again, I think it's just those little things that will make this product a better product in the end and help us again to be proud of our investment in the product.
Thank you, Ms. Call. I appreciate those comments and I think we've really got a lot of valuable feedback here. I think that I can sum up everything by saying that while obviously we were asking for a couple of things that were waivers and those are not looking like, look, they will get approved, we will proceed anyway and do our best to meet those requirements. They are going to be code requirements without the waivers. So as I, as I said at the end of my initial speech here, we're, we can live with what's in the staff report. The other thing that I heard this evening maybe that you may want to consider as a condition is just some, something to maybe objectify a little bit, your thoughts on how to make those front doors more inviting. That to me is the only missing piece. We've heard you loud and clear, but I would have no objection to some sort of loosely worded condition that kind of hammers on that point. But I think with that, you know, we're ready to rock and roll and get going with our final development plan.
Thank you, Mr. Underhill. Nikki, because we're looking at five motions today, can we separate these out and do one and three first and then move on to the waiver, the preliminary plat, and then the recommendation for the, sorry, preliminary development plan and preliminary plat? I think one and three are a little bit easier for us to move through than, than to four and five.
Yes. So after one and three, do you want to go two, four, five?
Yes.
Okay.
Ms. Fox, did you question or comment?
We made an awful lot of suggestions tonight without doing any conditions. I mean...
Yeah, that's where we're going. So one and three are just the administrative departures and parking plan. And then we're going to have Nikki project, these six waivers have more discussion on that particular one because there are so many minutia in these particular motions. So one and three are administrative departures and parking plan. There were no hangups that I heard from the commission on those two items, so I was going to entertain those and then go into discussion. Then, do you have any?
Leave that to, I'll leave that to, I just want to be sure that the, that many of the constructive comments are conditioned in our motion. Thank you.
Okay, so I will pull up the administrative departures. Thank you. Just give me one moment. Thank you, Nikki. So I am looking for a motion and I'll give the commission time to review these. These are just the block length and then the height, the minimum story height. So I heard no concerns about these two items, so I will entertain a motion on approval of two administrative departures.
So moved. Second.
I have a first and a second.
Mr. Supalak?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Yes.
Mr. Fishman?
Yes.
Mr. Fishman?
Yes.
Ms. Call?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Schneer?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Beal. Now Nikki, if I could have you pull up the parking plan, motion three. All right, give the commission just a moment to review those items. With no concerns, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Fishman. Ms. Beal?
Mr. Schneer?
Mr. Schneer?
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
Mr. Fishman?
Yes.
Ms. Call?
Yes.
Mr. Supalak?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Beal. Now Nikki, if I could have you pull up the parking plan, motion three. All right, give the commission just a moment to review those items. With no concerns, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Fishman. Ms. Beal?
Mr. Schneer?
Mr. Schneer? Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
Mr. Fishman?
Yes.
Ms. Call?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Fishman?
Yes.
Ms. Call?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Fishman?
Yes.
Ms. Call?
Yes.
Mr. Supalak?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Yes.
Mr. Fishman?
Yes.
Ms. Call?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Fishman?
Yes.
Ms. Call?
Yes.
Mr. Supalak?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Yes.
Mr. Schneer?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
All right, Nikki, clarification, you're looking for a motion to approve with, so that'll turn some time over to you.
If I might, I would actually recommend separate motions on each of the remaining two waivers and to move them in the affirmative.
Okay.
So, a vote for, a vote of yea would be to approve the waiver, a vote of no would be to disapprove the waiver.
Thank you, Sam. All right, I am looking for a motion for approval of the waiver to permit an uninterrupted ridge line parallel to the street that does not include architectural details where architectural details are required. Do I have a first?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Grimes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Beal?
Ms. Fox?
No.
Mr. Schneer?
No.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Fishman?
No.
Ms. Call?
No.
Mr. Grimes?
No.
Mr. Supalak?
No.
Thank you, Ms. Beal. I'm now looking for a motion to recommend approval of waiver to permit open space proportions to exceed the maximum three-one length with proportions. Do I have a first?
Ms. Call?
Yes.
Can I, I'm sorry, can I just mention one thing on that relative to the staff report? Did recommend approval with conditions that if those were, had certain treatments along with them, and this would be something we probably have to work out a final development plan, that those could be counted. I just wanted to note that it wasn't a, an unconditioned request or really it was something that the staff had put some conditions around and we would be agreeable to working with staff presenting something in final development plan to try and address the concerns that have been raised tonight. So it's possible, I'd like to see if we, you know, deal with that through final development plan. I don't know if Nikki, procedurally that can be done, but that would be a request I would make.
Yeah, so potentially if the commission would entertain it, the applicant could rescind the waiver request this evening and it could be before you again with the final development plan. At that time, you would have open space details to evaluate whether or not that's an acceptable solution.
Yeah, my concern there is at final development plan, the footprints of the building are locked. And so if there's any requirement to incorporate additional open space, it can't be done on premise, it has to be done off premise. And so then we're fee and lieu and then it's density and intensity. Yes, we're okay with the density, I think the intensity is where we have to hang up. So looking to the rest of the commission, that's just my own personal.
I agree, I agree.
Okay. All right, so I am looking for a motion. Again, this is waiver recommendation, sorry, waiver number, number six.
So moved.
Thank you. I have a first, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Beal.
Ms. Call?
No.
Mr. Fishman?
No.
Ms. Fox?
No.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
All right, Nikki, clarification, you're looking for a motion to approve with, so that'll turn some time over to you.
If I might, I would actually recommend separate motions on each of the remaining two waivers and to move them in the affirmative.
Okay.
So, a vote for, a vote of yea would be to approve the waiver, a vote of no would be to disapprove the waiver.
Thank you, Sam. All right, I am looking for a motion for approval of the waiver to permit an uninterrupted ridge line parallel to the street that does not include architectural details where architectural details are required. Do I have a first?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Grimes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Beal?
Ms. Fox?
No.
Mr. Schneer?
No.
Ms. Kennedy?
Mr. Fishman?
No.
Ms. Call?
No.
Mr. Grimes?
No.
Mr. Supalak?
No.
Thank you, Ms. Beal. I'm now looking for a motion to recommend approval of waiver to permit open space proportions to exceed the maximum three-one length with proportions. Do I have a first?
Ms. Call?
Yes.
Can I, I'm sorry, can I just mention one thing on that relative to the staff report? Did recommend approval with conditions that if those were, had certain treatments along with them, and this would be something we probably have to work out a final development plan, that those could be counted. I just wanted to note that it wasn't a, an unconditioned request or really it was something that the staff had put some conditions around and we would be agreeable to working with staff presenting something in final development plan to try and address the concerns that have been raised tonight. So if it's possible, I'd like to see if we, you know, deal with that through final development plan. I don't know if Nikki, procedurally that can be done, but that would be a request I would make.
Yeah, so potentially if the commission would entertain it, the applicant could rescind the waiver request this evening and it could be before you again with the final development plan. At that time, you would have open space details to evaluate whether or not that's an acceptable solution.
Yeah, my concern there is at final development plan, the footprints of the building are locked. And so if there's any requirement to incorporate additional open space, it can't be done on premise, it has to be done off premise. And so then we're fee and lieu and then it's density and intensity. Yes, we're okay with the density, I think the intensity is where we have to hang up. So looking to the rest of the commission, that's just my own personal.
I agree, I agree.
Okay. All right, so I am looking for a motion. Again, this is waiver recommendation, sorry, waiver number, number six.
So moved.
Thank you. I have a first, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Beal.
Ms. Call?
No.
Mr. Fishman?
No.
Ms. Fox?
No.
Ms. Kennedy?
Mr. Schneer?
No.
Mr. Grimes?
No.
Mr. Supalak?
No.
Thank you, Ms. Beal. All right, looks like we're on to motion number four. This is the biggie with...
Ms. Call?
Yes.
I hope there's a point of order with that. We've, we've received motion, we've received motion to approve, but the commissioners who moved to approve then voted no.
Yes. Thad, do you want to go into details? I can...
Right, the, the motion is, serves to place the question in front of the body, not to endorse the approval per se.
Okay, I'll defer to you, but that's not how it reads. They're, they're moving to approve, not moving to bring it before the body.
Well, they're, they're moving, so it would be moving for a vote on the approval of the waiver, I think would be the more, would be the precise motion.
Sorry about that.
Thank you, Mr. Schneer. Thank you, Sam. All right, we're looking at now...
Ms. Call, just want to chime in really quick. Just from a documentation perspective, should we change the word of motion number four from disapproval to approval since we all voted no for it, just to make sure documentation wise it matches our vote?
The minutes will match because the motion was made to approve.
Okay.
All right. Nikki, if you could present the biggie, the 13 conditions.
Yeah, I will go ahead and present that and then obviously Rebecca, I believe you're going to lead us in a review of those.
That's correct.
As well as potentially any that would be appropriate to be added.
That's correct. So Ms. Fox, this is where we'll talk about the other items that were, that came up as suggestions and put a little more meat around those. All right, Nikki, if you could go through just the, essentially cleanup items like the mismatch in the counts and the working with, you know, fire department and that sort of thing. Go through those.
Yeah, so there obviously are a number of conditions that are kind of perfunctory in nature. The applicant has clarified that 154 units are proposed. The applicant has also obviously committed to provide a fire apparatus road, that's condition number three, my apologies. Condition number two will require the applicant to look at the public street sections with engineering and ensure that on-street parking and tree lawns are adequate and that the street section allows adequate space for the public realm. Condition number four is the counterpart to the waiver that you recently disapproved, and so we are basically requiring that the applicant meet that code requirement. Condition number five, I did have a clarification on that based on some of the discussion, but the applicant provide a minimum three-foot variability to the roof height of each unit by modifying the finished floor elevation. This will allow the applicant to stagger those roof heights appropriately and create more differentiation between each unit. Number six is Mr. Supalak's concern, the application of thin brick, the applicant shall use corner pieces designed to emulate full-depth brick. Number seven, the applicant meet the required 80% coverage of primary building materials along the street-facing facades. Next, the applicant work with staff to provide appropriate locations and screening for air conditioning units and refuse containers. This is obviously a concern of staff due to the limited area in the vehicular use area behind the homes. That the applicant work with staff to screen those vehicular use areas, so just as Mr. Supalak and others had discussed, providing some opacity and plantings in those areas. Ten, that the applicant provide bicycle parking. So just as Mr. Supalak and others had discussed, providing some opacity and plantings in those areas. Ten, that the applicant provide bicycle parking. Staff does not believe they will be able to provide the full extent of bicycle parking because it is quite excessive, given the number of residential units. But 25%, which would be 10 spaces in that public square area, seemed appropriate. And the applicant should provide the total required amount of open space with the final development plan. This may be more challenging given the disapproval of the waiver regarding open space. Number 12, the applicant provide high-quality amenities for the mid-block pedestrian ways, including benches, art, water features, and lighting, allowing them to function and count toward the open space provisions. This condition likely needs modified if those mid-block pedestrian ways are no longer counting as open spaces. The level of amenities would not be expected. Number 13, that the plans be revised to require a mid-block pedestrian way in block four. Presently, there is not one. And those are the 13 conditions that staff recommended.
Thank you, Nikki, for going through those. So at this time, Commissioner, I'm looking back to you. The items that I heard that were most concerning were front elevations in inviting areas. So how we want to word that to work with staff. Obviously, there are going to be some changes with the, the open space requirements. That's going to modify some of these areas. So how we want to phrase that and if we have support of the commission to allow for that. That one is probably the main item. I know, Mr. Supalak, you talked about greenery and vertical space and, and those, but that can be handled in the final plat. So preliminary plat where we're looking at massing, we're looking at footprints, we're looking at the things that aren't easily changed when it comes next. So this does not include landscaping, this does not include, you know, maybe lighting features that are removable and replaceable, that, those types of things are not included in this area. Really what we're looking for are the, not the fit and finish, but the, the mass items. So Nikki, do you want to clarify that anymore or?
I think that was a very clear and correct summary.
So Ms. Fox, if you want to start us off?
Just the differentiation, because these units, as Keith was saying, are supposed to look like individual units, I think it's important that, that we make sure that the doorways, that this, that the, the activity at the street allows for stoops or porches or walk-ups. And I think it, we have to be sure that we have that and that, that there is a different feel at the street level than you would get above and that each unit looks, has an individual look to it. If we're going to break them apart, they have to look different. I don't know how you word that, Nikki, but I think that's really important.
So Thad, looking to you for a little perspective here. If there is a condition, can we leave it as broad as work with staff? Or do we need to put a, you know, 20% of the, the units have that stoop or, or, or list?
Well, I think that work with staff is a little bit broad without giving staff some guidance on what you're looking for.
Well, let's pose the question, Nikki, do you know what we're looking for?
Well, I agree with Thad that we do need to be a little bit more specific, but I have been taking notes and listening to what you've been saying. So I have a couple items thus far and maybe we add to them as we go. The first addition I have is that the architectural style be revised to ensure that each unit appears as an individual attached single-family home. The next item that I have is that the applicant work with staff to ensure that the front elevations provide traditional elements such as stoops, porches, columns, and awnings. So those are the two additions I have thus far. And just based on continuing conversation, I will add as appropriate.
Ms. Fox, so looking to you, do those clarification items cover the majority of the issues? Or are there other items that you'd like to delineate?
I think the terminal vista piece is important. I think we have to be sure that we address that we have, you know, coverage for being sure that that terminal vista has a significant element of interest.
Now, I think that we can cover that in, in final plat because that's not an architectural building massing, everything that's more of the open space and, and that sort of element, Nikki, Thad?
I think we could condition at this point that it's a gateway, is how we would refer to it. We could condition that the gateway incorporate a public art piece, if that would be appropriate. I don't know, Jane, if you have something else in mind?
You know, I don't have anything in particular in mind and I, I don't want to, I don't want to corral the, the applicant or the architect from what he thinks might be the right piece for the gateway. But I think it's really important that, this is the holistic part and this is where, you know, we can, we can discuss architecture and the size and the footprint all along, but in the end, in the end, what really works is how we activate the street. And I have to say that, you know, your architecture and your suggestion on the, whether it's a large enough area that there's a fountain or a piece of art is really up to your creative decision-making, but it's an important element that we, we have to be sure that you concentrate on. And also that the opens, and the other thing I would suggest, these open spaces have to be large enough to be usable and they can't just have a bench in them. I mean, there's a lot of good, small, open spaces that, examples all over the country, where they have a real use on the street and just having a bench just, just doesn't get it. So those are the things that I think are really important.
So, Ms. Fox, I think that the gateway concern is adequately addressed by the code. And I think the comments here this evening, the applicant will take those into consideration and meet your expectations. I think to your point, if we add a condition about the gateway, we would have to come up with something that would be so specific that they couldn't make their own designs. I think that we could condition that all open spaces provide amenities.
Is that not a code requirement anyway, Nikki?
I mean, yes, the code does require various open space amenities based on the open space type. But if, if Ms. Fox has something more specific in mind, I mean, the code does contemplate many of these things which will be provided in the future.
I don't have anything in particular, I, I think it's, it's a matter of not going to the minimum of the spirit of this, of the vitality of the streetscape. It's to try to elevate it, it's really important. And, and as was mentioned, you're kind of tucked back there in the corner. I mean, open space even calls for playgrounds, you might have children, you might have some, and when I say a play space, it could be something very simple. But you may have children in these units and there's nothing for them, there's no, no place for them to just find a, a place to go. You know, a green space to go other than going all the way to Riverside Crossing. So I, I think these are important pieces and parts that make the neighborhood cohesive and usable and enjoyable.
Yeah, and I, I thought we've heard, we've heard you loud and clear on that and certainly we're taking that seriously, just like everything else. I, you know, whether it needs to be conditioned or not, I think from a legal standpoint, the code protects us, but we hear that, you know, the level of scrutiny you're going to give it at the next stage, certainly.
And then the only other call out that I would have is, remember we're looking at the walkable area. This is the touted, you know, we want the more dense where you can live, work, play, all in the same area, don't have to drive a car, you know, that, that holistic kind of approach to this area. And yet we have for 154 units, we have 10 bicycle spots. That seems a little low to me, given the nature of this particular environment. And I'm not talking, you know, the metal one that just has the, you know, the place for the tire and no design to it whatsoever, that's not typically what you see in the city of Dublin for a bicycle parking spot. But the reduction to 25, Nikki, when you highlighted the 10, that, that 25% equals 10 bicycle spots, it kind of hit me a little bit wrong. So I, I should have done my homework and, and written the, the absolute value rather than the percentage value, that's, that's my wrongdoing. But that's the only other thing that I have a little bit of a hang up right now. So I'd like to see the other commissioners, your thoughts on the bicycle parking spaces. Mr. Fishman? You're, you're.
Um, near me now? Okay, I agree with Mrs. Call 100%. 10 isn't going to do it. They will have spaces to park in their garages for their people that are residents there, but I, I, I think they need more. The other thing, there's been a lot of discussion about the open spaces and amenities and so on. When we spent the two years doing the code, there was a tremendous amount of discussion about the open spaces and we called them pocket parks. And, and, and several definitions given, and the one I remember clearly is that, that each of those spaces had to be usable for groups or families to congregate and, 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 and have some amenities. And, and so those little slits wouldn't do it. So they have to be areas where we can put things, that where people can stand around, sit around, and congregate. I mean, we talked about that over and over again during the two years that we developed that code. So I, I think Mrs. Fox's points are well taken. The other thing I'd like to add is that we're, we've narrowed this down to doorways when we made the condition. I think what Mrs. Fox meant is not just the doorway, but the entire facade of the front of the building, that it be different and look residential and, and have character. And, and I think she made an excellent point when she said that it doesn't have to be expensive, but it, it, it has to have character. And, and the, I noticed the one that struck me was the brick walks that really gave it the, the building character. So I, I think we're not looking, I don't want to come to the final development and say, oh, we changed the doors. I, I think what we're looking for is a change of the elevation of each unit so that it has character. So do you agree with me, Fox, is that, that what you were trying to convey?
I do, I, I, I do, I totally do. And I, I've, I've said enough and you all understand where I'm coming from. I, I think it has to be very traditional in order to look different in, in Bridge Park. But I think utilizing some of these curvatures, different shape of window, those kinds of things are important. And I think that the streetscape has to have enough space that you actually have room for activity. And maybe your open space is in front of the buildings where you have these walk-ups and areas that people can sit with a lawn chair if they wanted to on the, on John Shields Parkway or such, so.
Nikki, can you present the wording that you had for the traditional elements? Because I think you covered a little bit more than just the entrance in your, your stated wording, but I'm not remembering if I'm remembering correctly.
So.
Elevations, thank you. All right, so Mr. Fishman, Ms. Fox, she did reference front elevation while she calls out different elements that are entrance items that applicant is hearing and hearing that's not just the, the front entrance, meaning the doorway, but the front facade, the front elevation.
Right.
Thad, is there any other clarification that you would request on that wording?
No, I think that's perfect.
From my point of view, that would seem to provide guidance to the applicant based upon the comments that have been made without either creating some kind of rigid numerical minimum or leaving it so open-ended that nebulous condition. I would invite the, the applicant, if they feel differently, to voice that and we can hammer out more of a condition.
Well, I, I would agree that being formulaic really stymies creativity and I'd like to maybe see the condition one more time. I think we're headed in the right direction. I mean, this is the whole, the whole difficult part about getting architecture right. Yeah, I mean, I think we can live with this and we will be, have the minutes to consult as well to get really further color on where we're going with this and I think we understand, so I think we're fine.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter Hill. Looking back to the commission now, any other concerns before we move forward on this particular item?
No, the only, I, I will say this and I want to, I want to cite it too because I think it would be helpful. The last thing we want to do is have you go out of here and leave and just shake your head and say, I got direction from all over the place. Code 153062 talks about articulation of stories and the street facade and building variety. And the intent of that, the spirit of that is where we're asking you to go, right? So if, if you could review that again with staff, I think that would help a lot. And with the comments that we made tonight, I think we'll bring you a little closer to what we're talking about.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. All right, at this time, I will entertain a motion. How many can, oh, Nikki, can you present again?
Yeah, but I think I need some additional clarity on a couple of these items before we make a motion, just given some of the disapprovals of waivers that happened. So, yes, one second. To me, it sounded like, Ms. Call, you were not supportive of condition 10, which would require the applicant to provide the required amount of parking if we remove it.
I don't, I don't need the 100%, I was just not comfortable with the 25%. So I think 50% would be perfectly acceptable in my mind, but I'm looking to the rest of the commission. That puts 20 spaces for 154 units.
Okay, I'm getting thumbs up. Well, I just have a question on that. Do we have any, do you have any reference point on density versus bicycle parking and some of the other adjacent properties, Nikki, that you can help guide us? Yeah, so I mean, many of the for-sale products are able to accommodate the bicycle parking requirement within private garages. I think what staff was really trying to home in on was that some of the required bicycle parking should be provided in open spaces. And, you know, maybe that doesn't need to be quite as much. So in Bridge Park, for example, most of the private, most of the bicycle parking is provided in the garage in a consolidated area as opposed to, you know, very, a very minimal amount is provided along the street.
So, and Ms. Kennedy, my reason for feeling uncomfortable with the 25 is that I'm not necessarily thinking these are all going to be residents. I'm thinking that I want to go have brunch with a friend of mine who happens to live there. I'm not going to take my car because I'm going to walk around to the farmer's market. I'm going to go, you know, do other things. So instead of taking my car and utilizing on-street parking, which we don't have a lot of in this area, we do have garage parking, but I'm going to ride my bicycle, park my bicycle at my friend's house and then walk around. So I'm thinking of not just the residents, I'm thinking of the visitors to the residents.
That makes sense, yeah, I can't imagine residents using bicycle parking in their own neighborhood. So, yeah, understood. I don't think I have an opinion on that, I was just asking the question to get some, some of a reference point in support of, of Mrs. Call's, Ms. Call's proposal.
Thank you, Ms. Kennedy, Ms. Fox?
Yeah, I, I just want to ask Nikki because I know that we're going to be getting the, the bikes coming here next year, but I forget what they're called, the large tired bikes that are.
Road. Road bikes.
Right, they're coming and we have to park them somewhere and we better have bike parking available for those. Otherwise, they're just going to be on the corner without bike parking, so I think she has a good point.
Thank you.
Great, so I've modified that to 50%. If that's agreeable to everyone, I did want to, I did want to garner, I guess, some additional clarity on condition number 12. So this condition, for the most part, is null and void as waiver number six was disapproved. This condition basically references if the mid-block pedestrian ways are to count for open space, they must provide high-quality features that are above and beyond what would. high-quality features that are above and beyond what would normally be required for a mid-block pedestrian way. So if it's not open space, it should not be required to be treated as such. So I've struck that condition unless the commission has any comments.
I think it's appropriate to remove the must, but that does not eliminate the may.
I agree with, I agree with that, because if it turns out that they use a large, very large open space, like a courtyard, that acts as if it's a mid-block pedestrian way, and it's large enough and big enough to create some active space, I would allow that to be a mid-block pedestrian way, because it's large enough to have a significant effect on the streetscape and its use. So I don't want you to think that you can only have a mid-block pedestrian way, and then you have to come up with some park space. You might be able to incorporate a beautiful little courtyard that becomes your mid-block pedestrian way. It's just not a sidewalk, that's all. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does make sense. And if they were to do that, they would meet the proportion of open space length to width. So basically, this condition would still no longer be required because then they would trigger the open space requirements, which have those amenities that you're looking for.
Okay.
Nikki, were there any other conditions you need clarity on?
Let me do one quick check of the first page. Nope, I think that's it. So let's, if you don't mind, let's review this together one more time.
Yes, please.
So this is conditions one through seven remain largely unchanged.
Ms. Call, we have two points of clarification on our end. I don't want to interrupt if you're not ready, but one's on this page.
Yes, Mr. Underhill, go ahead.
Okay, Matt, would you jump in on condition number five and clarification we would like there?
If it's okay, I'm going to defer to Keith on that. Keith is the architect, and I think a little more capable of addressing that.
Well, yeah, I mean, just the way the sentences worded it confines us a little bit. I'd like to be able to express a little more creativity in accomplishing that goal. Perhaps there are other variations we could accomplish by way of roof pitch adjustments or otherwise. I don't know what those final answers are, so I'd like to not be limited to finished floor elevation adjustments.
Now, Nikki, looking for your opinion on the other condition that came in that required that each be essentially modified to look like its own unit. Is that, does that have enough teeth for you with what we're looking at with the roof variability? Or would it be your preference to have this current condition remain?
My preference would be to retain the current condition. I think that the current condition is quite compelling, whereas the proposed condition is a nice add to the existing conditions, but it is not quite as compelling.
I would agree with you, looking to the commission then, for that condition to remain, for the roof line to change by the three feet, or the motion to not remain. So thumbs up for remain.
If I may just ask, and I'm sorry to jump in, was the question raised by Mr. Filipkowski, whether there would be three feet of change in the roof height, or whether that could only be accomplished by floor elevation?
It would be the latter. We'd like it a little bit more open-ended about how we arrive at that solution. The three feet is something we'll work to accomplish, but in the spirit of creativity, we'd like to keep that a little bit more open-ended.
So Nikki, could you present the wording again?
I'm just going to generally say on behalf of the architect, there is geometry they've got to play with here. So I happen to agree that it could be, it could be making sense of roof pitch, it could be making sense of the height of it, all make it work well.
So Mr. Supalack and Nikki, looking to you, if we modified the condition with the applicant provide a minimum of three feet of variability to the roof height of each, between each unit, and left it at that, and left out the "by" to accommodate the geometry and the flexibility? Mark, looking to you for your commission and architect opinion, and then we'll go back to applicant.
How about this? I definitely think that eliminating the "how," so the "by" commentary, allows them more flexibility on how to do it, because they're going to have to rethink through all that.
Okay.
Thank you for indulging us on that conversation. And we'll have, just for the record, our next clarification will be on the last condition that's been added, just for some clarification. So I'll let you do your thing until then.
All right. And the wording is just a little odd, you know, to the roof height of each unit for a portion of the townhome units within each building. Sorry, of each for a portion of the townhome units.
Sorry, Rebecca, I'm not sure that I'm getting, I mean, it is a little bit strange, but the applicant provide a minimum three-foot variability to each roof height.
I would say between each unit, because they can go three feet, and then three feet down, and then three feet back up. So units one and three could have the same height, while unit two has three feet lower. So I would just say between each unit, so that there's that step, so it does look like individual units.
If I may just continue to add, that there's a compounding complexity about the staggering of units front to back. So it's not even the case that each individual unit can stagger. So it continues to need to be more ambiguous, and that the final three words of the sentence should be struck. I mean, I think ultimately the spirit is to undulate the roof lines, right? And so to the extent we're able to do that is what we're after.
And I think, Keith, the concern is, without the between each unit, even the front, to use your word, "undulation," that elevation change across the front is not a, we want both the elevation change across the front and the roof line, so that it truly looks like each individual unit is a for-sale product, kind of a standalone that just happens to be immediately adjacent to its neighborhood.
So Rebecca, just to clarify, on Keith's behalf, "undulation" he's referring to, they actually have, how about this, the roof line does not a single beam down the center of the building right now. It actually moves forward and back from one unit to the next. So there's even, again, this is where the two-dimensional elevations appear that it's a single plane. But as you walk along it, because it's one near and further, they're already going to start to develop some measure of undulation by that front and back nature.
Yeah, and I understood that. It was Nikki still remaining concerned that that was not sufficient, that the roof line also needed to change the three feet, is where I was going.
Would it be helpful to you, Keith, to describe it in a way that you have the flexibility to create a variation in the individualness of each unit, either utilizing that with roof line, shape of roof, I mean, what would you suggest? Because you know where we're going. And we're, I hate to see us be so prescriptive that we say your roof line has to go up three foot, and then you're stuck. So tell us what would be helpful for us to get where we need to go.
You were going to say something? I'm up for comments. I mean, I'm trying to figure out how to word it to capture the spirit of what you guys want. And trying to achieve a three-foot difference between each unit is the goal. But again, there are compounding factors, constructability-wise and everything else, that come into play. And limit me by way of finished floor, and to limit, and to require it on every individual unit. Each individual unit can still look different if two happen to have the same ridge line, but then the other on a seven-unit building are otherwise undulating. We've still solved the issue. We've broken down the mass. So it's, again, it's, I'm not sure exactly what the, what the sentence, how it needs to read to satisfy what you guys need. I just know that, I'm concerned, I can't perform exactly to the sentence the way it's written.
So Keith, our concern, you know, we look across the city, we see different products. So we see Crawwell. Crawwell, if it were constructed properly, Crawwell is a beautiful product, has nice finishes, quality was lacking a little bit there, but the roof line is all the same. It looks like one big building, even though you have a brick that has a square roof, you have a pitch in the next one, you have all of these different undulations across the front, it still looks like it's one big mass. What we're looking for is, even though it is internally one big mass, it doesn't look like it. It looks like fully separate buildings. And Nikki, I think I'm parroting the spirit of previous conversations that we've had. If I am not doing you justice, please clarify.
Yeah, I apologize. I am kind of at a loss on how to come up with something that satisfies everyone. I do think it was a good step, a good compromise with the applicant to eliminate the solution of the finished floor. I do still feel strongly that these roof heights need to vary, and we need to be specific about how we want them to vary. You know, my opinion is that we are providing quite a bit of flexibility in other areas, and the applicant, I believe, will be able to design around certain issues if the commission feels that this is an issue that they would like to carry forward.
Could we have a general phrase, something to the effect of unless the applicant provides an alternative design solution at final development plan to be approved by the planning commission in its sole discretion?
Right, that's great.
You're, I can't hear you.
We couldn't hear you. It doesn't look like you're muted, but we didn't hear that.
Oh, I'm talking to myself, because I can't process thoughts unless I talk. So I'm trying to write this, Erin. Can you say it one more time?
Yes. So we need the first sentence right for you guys, I guess, or the first part of the sentence right. And then it'll be comma, we'll figure out what that is, but comma, unless an alternative design solution reaching the same result is approved by the planning commission as part of a final development plan as determined in its sole discretion. So we're going to have to take the risk on our side that we think you'll like the alternative solution, but at least give us the wiggle room to make that attempt if we need to.
I agree. I trust Keith, too.
I would support that.
Yeah, I support that.
I do, too.
Thank you. Thank you.
How many yards was that?
I don't know. Someone should throw a penalty flag on us all.
Millennium games.
There you go.
All right, Nikki, thank you for presenting. And it just likes some cleanup wording, "unless" and "alternative" design instead of "unless" "be" and "am." Mr. Underhill, looking at that wording, is that acceptable to you?
Yes.
All right. So I think we're through the first seven. Any other questions or comments on the first seven? Okay, moving on to, starting with number eight. Okay, I have no concerns eight through 13, looking to the commission. Nikki, any clarification required? Okay, moving on. I have no concerns with 1415, looking to the commission.
All right. I'm going to add that it's, I would like to incorporate some landscape features, and the landscape features would be included in the design of that front porch, that front door element.
Again, I don't necessarily think that's needed at this point. Remember, we're at preliminary plat, we're at the Broad Street, we can do landscaping final.
Yeah, you're right. I just want it to be a comprehensive design thought when you, I just don't want you to add a bush, is I guess is what I'm saying. As I showed in those aspirational images, it's a sort of a comprehensive look that activates the streetscape. It's not just planting a bush.
And Mr. Underhill, to your earlier comments where you made reference to referencing the minutes of this meeting, are you comfortable with the direction of the commission at this point?
Yes, I think it's going to be difficult to articulate it more concisely. And yeah, we will, we will not only rely on this wording, but also go back and review the minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Underhill. Any other concerns, questions, or discussion from commission before I entertain a motion? All right. This puts us at 15. Does that include any that were removed? So is that a total of 14 that we are doing a motion with 14?
It should be 14.
Okay. All right. I am looking for a motion to approve the preliminary development plan with 14 conditions.
Second.
I have a first and a second. Ms. Beal?
Mr. Supalack?
Yes.
Ms. Call?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Schneer?
Yes.
Mr. Fishman?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Beal. All right, we're to motion number five. So this is preliminary plat and crew conditions. Nikki, could you present, please? All right. Any concerns, discussion on the two conditions? Seeing them, I will entertain a motion.
So move.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Beal?
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Fishman?
Yes.
Ms. Fox? Ms. Fox? Ms. Call?
Yes.
Mr. Supalack?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Yes.
Mr. Schneer?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Beal. Gentlemen, we thank you for joining us tonight for our, you know, the closest we've gotten to playing a football game any time recently. Thank you for your patience, and thank you for your effort. This is not a trivial task that we've all undertaken, especially on your part. So thank you very much for your diligence and working together to make something, again, that we will be proud of, that will make an amazing addition to the City of Dublin. We appreciate that.
Thank you. And I want to compliment you all on the conduct of the meeting. It was very productive, and we took a lot away from it. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Underhill. Gentlemen, have a wonderful rest of your evening, and we look forward to seeing you again soon.
Thank you.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we are just about at the zero-yard touchdown. Okay, so we are moving on to communications. Staff, do you have communications for council this evening?
The only thing that I have on my radar, and then maybe Claudia has something, is the joint meeting that we referenced related to meeting with the council, planning and zoning commission, and architecture review board, and the board of zoning appeals. That's going to be on Monday, virtually at 6:00, and you all should have received an invitation for that. The format, as I outlined in the email, bit of update about council's policy direction that they've had over the last year or so, and then um, have the opportunity for the chair persons, for each of the boards, to bring forward their two um, sort of main topics that they wanna discuss and bring forward for everyone to um, provide feedback on and direction. Um, and at this point, we're really looking from from all of you, some ideas, um, you know, that Rebecca could sort of prioritize and figure out what what you all think would be the best thing to bring forward to council and talk that through. I guess I'll open it up, open it up for that, um, just so we have some thoughts.
Um, I I have a couple of items that uh, have come to mind as we have met together the last few months. Uh, one of them is just architectural influence. So, you know, we've talked about inviting an architect in, some mock trainings, whether that's virtual, where we don't actually invite an an architect in, but uh, we do some research and have some webinar type attending uh, classes that we can attend, so that we can really see what's out there and uh, refine our architectural acumen to be better commissioners and to be able to articulate really what our vision is. So that's number one. Uh, another one is that relying heavily on you to help us to make sure, you know, we all go through the Open and Public Meetings Act and that sort of thing, but going a step beyond. What are some things that we uh, can identify as maybe we're not as proficient at when it comes to um, ensuring that we are protecting ourselves in long run while still refining our code to make sure that there are teeth to our requests and that sort of um, sort of direction? Uh, and making sure that we stay somewhat in our lane, make sure that we understand our roles roles and responsibilities and that we execute to those. And then the final one uh, that I have on my radar that's kind of in my top three is, and this is a sensitive one to me, is open space. We have talked before, we see every application has open space. We try to say, well, we want more than just open space, but our code, it doesn't really have a lot of teeth in it. Uh, in my previous city, what we ended up doing was implementing a point system where we rated different items and you had to provide open space that was usable. Uh, Warren, you talked about, you know, the gathering place for groups of individuals. We we took it a little bit further because we were where Dublin is, where Dublin was thirty years ago is where my city was when I was on council. It was just boom. So we ended up implementing, you know, if you had a top lot then, if you had a water feature then, and and they had to reach a certain point system, and they had to reach a a certain point value in order for it to be qualified as open space. We had to be in lieu, we had all of that, but what we ended up with was every open space wasn't just, let's put in some shrubs, let's throw in a couple of benches, and hey, we're good, now the developers peeling out, residents are now trying to find a park that they can drive to so that they can have their kids play on a playground. Uh, so those are my my top three. I have some other that are minor, but I'll wait for a different day on those. I'd love to hear your suggestions on other items that that you're looking for. Ms. Kennedy?
Hey, Ms. Call, I think um, I I like where you were going with the architecture um, piece of the puzzle, maybe, and and maybe this is something, obviously Jane has has more insights because she serves on this commission, but I'd love to hear from council what council thinks we're missing, or what, you know, what we need to really beef up from an understanding perspective or a reference perspective, or like Jane brought aspirational images at today's meeting, like things that we should be paying more attention to. Like, I'd love to hear council's feedback on on in that space, and maybe that plays into, you know, item two that you presented as well.
Agreed. That's one thing that we we've struggled with. We don't have, you know, of course, we have Jane, which is wonderful. We get to see her at every meeting and we get to hear her voice, but she is one member of council. And so wouldn't it be nice if we got a report card that said, okay, you really missed the mark on this one, or hey, you nailed it on, you know, these two items, this is exactly the vision that council has, because we have the broad strokes, we have the community plans, we have, we could reference individual meetings. And of course, I challenge some of you to go back and look at some of these more controversial areas that we that we've looked at, go look at the minutes or go watch the meetings from council, because sometimes they're, they take it even a step further than we do and we get pretty critical. So I I challenge each of you to go out and do that. That that's nice to be able to reference, but at the same time, having a frank and candid discussion with council. Because just like us, you know, we have an applicant before us, we're not going to say, you know, oh, you know, look at this, you know, this one's awful, or oh, this one's my favorite, you know, we don't necessarily throw our emotions in there, but we really do wanna understand how council feels we're doing as a commission, and if we're on the same page with that direction, uh, because we're both, you know, both bodies together, many bodies together, are building the future of Dublin. Any other items that, any other items that commission members would like to to discuss, to bring up, to um, offer in this discussion that that's coming up on Monday? Mr. Mr. Fishman? You're muted.
I'll learn how to do this eventually, okay? I may, hopefully be back to personal meetings before I learn. Um, uh, anyway, uh, I don't know how we discuss this in in a meeting, but quality, I'm hearing so often lately about economics, okay? We want, you know, we wanna make these affordable units, so we wanna use it less expensive material. For example, I thought that uh, Jane did a fabulous job by showing those elevations, um, and and those did not look cheap. Uh, they looked high quality, and and I I think we've gotta, we've gotta be in sync with council on on quality, you know? Um, Bridge Street is wonderful, but you know, those buildings are stick-built buildings. I I I I'll be dead before they fall down, but I I I can't imagine those lasting fifty years or a hundred years like like um, uh, uh, buildings that we've required in the past. And and so um, uh, and 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 so I I think, and also, when you build less quality, uh, you build more maintenance, okay? And 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 uh, we have some projects around Dublin that got guy that that were sold, built, sold, and the next guy finds out all this maintenance, and they don't get maintained, okay? And and I so I'm not, I know I'm going on the wrong direction, but I I just think we have to talk some way about uh, less economics and more quality. If you can't afford to build it in Dublin, then you build it, you build something else, or you 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 pay less for the land or something. But I I think just the last couple of years, um, I I've seen that creep in, where uh, ten years ago, we said, well, this is what we require, this is what we require it to look like, and and if you can do it with new materials, thin brick or whatever, that's fine, but but it it it's it's gotta look like quality. And I and I, Jane just made me think, when I saw those elevations, that's nothing like we're looking at um, uh, with with this with this uh, project. So um, I I I'd like to see what how council feels about that, about the long-term um, uh, future of Dublin, and and um, you know, what these buildings look like twenty years from now, thirty years from now, or whatever. So that's 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 one thing. And I I I think also, another thing is cooperation between ARB, the the uh, and and us, um, that we're kind of on the same page as far as uh, what we want for downtown uh, uh, Dublin, because that is part of Dublin, and 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 um, I I think we're we're looking for certain things there, and I think I'd like to see, maybe we are on the same page, I don't know, but but I think that that I I'd like to, and that's great about these group meetings because we can get some coordination that way, so.
All right. So um, the one item that you highlighted, Warren, that Jane had touched on earlier was, you know, it's not necessarily the role of uh, planning and zoning commission to look at the diversity of housing types that are available because of price point. I know that we need a mix of housing type, but you know, Warren, you touched on, you know, other products where maintenance, to to put dollars and cents on it, we used to, we sold um, the the Crowell property. That Crowell property, a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, and the HOA fee because of the quality or lack thereof of materials was six hundred and forty-six dollars a month.
No, I voted against that project, by the way.
Thank you, thank you, Warren. So looking at the diversity of product, you know, we need townhomes, we need uh, single-family homes, we need empty nester-type homes, we need all of that, but if they all come in at price points that are beyond the reach of the people that we're trying to accommodate in a housing product, you know, if we're we're all single-family homes and people say, well, you you need townhomes for affordability, but the affordable townhomes are fifty thousand dollars more than a single-family home, did you really merit yourself anything? So as we look at these four hundred thousand dollar and and Jane, I think you mentioned three hundred thousand dollar tonight, the figure that I had was four hundred thousand dollar was the starting point for these these townhomes that we saw. So are are we building a product that either is going to be difficult to sell, and then going to be decreased in in price, they do phase one, and now they're cutting, they're trying to scale back on the materials and that sort of thing so they can make a profit? Uh, so while it's not our role to look at the economy of the individual products, understanding and being in lockstep with council on if we do townhomes, are we doing them in the right area, are we looking at through the bright lens to make sure we have quality products that do stand up for fifty or a hundred years and aren't being redeveloped in twenty?
You know, I think the the interesting thing here and 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 it it's it's difficult, I know that council does not want the planning and zoning commission to say yes at everything that comes before them. They don't. They they really are interested in quality, timeless, unique, and hu- and and um, architecture and buildings that that will stand the test of time. And I do worry that we sometimes get caught up in um, in the checklist instead of the spirit of what it is that we're supposed to be building. And Bridge Park is our jewel, you know? So I think we have to be really picky about um, about following the intent. If you go back and look at what the original picture of what Bridge Park was supposed to look like, it was full of open spaces, full of street activity, full of placemaking, full of unique architecture, varied in its housing style, in its architectural style, in its in its retail and mixed use, and we're just not getting that. So I I don't even know what to, I don't even know where to go. I mean, I I struggle with that, but I think you, this planning commission, you're right, it has all the power in the world to build the city. And I I think it's really important that we stop and and take a breath and figure out, you know, what's our role in that, and will we be proud of what, you know, we all said yes to in thirty years or twenty years?
And and to piggyback on that, I think it does start, I think staff does an amazing job. You guys put in so many hours and so much time for these items. The one thing that I would challenge you with is, you know how critical we are, and you know what we're looking for, and you know what council's looking for, I'd love to see recommend disapproval on more things. Nikki, I loved that you held your ground and said, I, you know, I feel strongly, I loved that word, I feel strongly, because we need that. We know that the discussions that you have with developers, you're gonna convey things like, you know, that's not gonna get by council, or council's not gonna like that, the commission's not gonna like, we know that those conversations are happening, but to read a planning report, where it's recommend approval, recommend approval, recommend approval, we don't get to hear the, you know, that's gonna take some work, or we don't get to hear that. If there could be more, and that, I know that we run, you know, the risk here, but but if we're requiring things that aren't supported by code, we need to know that, because if we're requiring them, there's a reason for it. And if we need to go back and look at code, then let's do it. But I'd love it to start with, I I'd love for an application to go from point A to point Z and have zero surprises, because planning, the planning department is in lockstep with the the planning commission, that's in lockstep with ARB, which which is in lockstep with the council, and it's just kind of a clean path through. Now, everyone comes from a different background, Mr. Supalack's gonna be able to challenge the architectural um, features and components. Warren, you've been around the city for thirty years, you you get to say, you know what, we did a project like that, uh, how many? Oh, you're muted. I I'm gonna take it as forty.
Forty, yeah, forty.
Let go of forty. So so everyone's gonna have their 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 own viewpoint, but at the at the end of the day, we're working together for a common goal. And so as we identify the areas where we can be better, as we identify, we're never gonna have, you know, every item is, everyone's opinion is exactly the same, that's what makes it better. Because Warren, you're gonna challenge something, Jane, you're gonna bring something up, Christina, you're gonna bring something up, and we're all going to, at the end of the day, end up, hopefully, with a better product. So taking this back to where we started, those items that we wanna take forward to the meeting next Monday. I made uh, three suggestions, I think we elaborated on those a little bit, but I wanna make sure that we are meeting the goals of the commission and bringing forward either our challenges or or what we're hopeful for, maybe our goals for 2021. And so uh, you know, I I heard the architectural um, component is something that we are all interested in, and bad or, you know, cohorts, so to speak, helping us to solidify our ground and identify either our own challenges or the challenges that we're faced with in code. Are there any other items or any substitution items that the commission would like to bring forward to next week? Warren? You're muted.
I I I I I don't have any any particular items, but I would just wanna compliment you and Jane, you said what I wanted to hear for a long time, and 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 and, but I also wanna defend the staff, because um, when I was chairman, I was chairman of this board for eight years, and and I I, we used to have a meeting, which you guys do, I think, too, don't you, have a meeting with the planner and 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 the vice chairman? And and the 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 planner would say to us, I hate this particular way they're doing it, but I couldn't get them to change, okay? And therefore, I just want you to be aware of it, okay, that I hate it, okay? Or not the whole plan necessarily, but something in the plan or sometimes the whole plan, okay? And so I I and and I think you guys have to kind of make us aware of that. Um, uh, I can figure out, but the the staff can't say to these these people, you know, I hate this, and 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 they'll say, we're gonna do this, okay, whether you hate it or not, we're gonna, we're gonna run run this in front of planning and zoning, we think we can get it passed. And 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 there's not much that that Jenny or anybody can do about that. So so that, you kinda got, you guys kinda have to find that out in your pre-meeting and 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 convey it to us, because they do a fantastic job, and 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 I they they really do. And but I I've been there, done that, seen that, and when I was chairman, and I I it it and and they they don't always like everything they recommend, but they but but it meets code or whatever, and 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 they have to, so I I'm telling them, but but I I love what you said, that that we do have to say no, and and affordable is a bunch of baloney in because those units are gonna be four hundred dollars, that's not, I can buy a new single-family house in Dublin for four hundred thousand dollars. So so um, uh, what they're uh, what they're telling us, they wanna do it, and and one thing, also, they're better than we are, they do this every day, we all do different other things. I I and 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 so when they come before us, they know what to say and how to say it. And 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 we have some, we're lucky, we have some great developers and great architects. I thought, I was very impressed with the the applicants tonight, uh, and but 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 uh, their job is to build it as cheaply, and it and and I'm I'm sure you can, Sally, you can you can attest to this, that you worked for many people that they they wanna come in with the highest profit margin they can come in with and 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 get the thing done. So um, but but I think we need to not be afraid to say no, and 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 uh, I I think we need to push for the highest quality product we can get for the city. And that, you just made me think so hard today, uh, uh, with showing those pictures, because that looked a lot different than what we were getting. And so I think we need to get what's in those pictures, and we can get it if if they know we can, uh, we can get it. You know, John Ryder's brother said thirty years ago, he said, you know, when you come into Dublin, he said, you gotta be good, because the project right next to you was good, you know, they they and 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 that's kind of what happens. If the if you if you let one project down a little bit, the next one comes in just a tiny bit lower, you know, and and but if if they, you, high quality sitting next to them, they know they gotta be high quality. So anyway, that's my my speech, I didn't talk much tonight, so. I said, but I I also wanna say one other thing, that this is in my forty-four years in but if if they, you, high quality sitting next to them, they know they gotta be high quality. So anyway, that's my my speech. I didn't talk much tonight, so. I said, but I I also want to say one other thing, that this is, in my forty-four years in Dublin, I've been on on TMZ for thirty-eight or whatever it is, almost forty, and and this is, I I really love this board. I I think you guys are all great, okay? So I think we do a pretty good job.
Thank you, Warren. Well, I will tentatively, I'll pencil in those two topics for Monday. In the meantime, if you think of anything, if you have any ideas, please send me an email and let me know that you've been pondering something. I'll, in the meantime, put my thinking cap on, and if I come up with anything different, I'll I'll put a shout out to the commission. Are there any other communication items? Jenny? Did you have something?
I didn't have anything. Claudia, did you have anything else?
And I apologize for leaving it off the chair agenda, but we do need a vote to approve the meeting dates, which were included in your packet, and we fixed that that date that was wrong the last time. Let me share that with you.
Did we get that in this week's packet? I know we got one last time, but I don't think I got a meeting schedule in this week's.
I got one.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure I don't have one.
I did not get a paper copy of it. It came through as paper copy.
It's on OneDrive if.
Oh, I'll pop over there. I just don't remember seeing it.
I got one.
I think if it was just the one date that was changed, then I I'd like to make a motion to approve the dates for 2021.
It does include tax day. No other dates screened to me. Yes, I I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Ms. Fox? Mr. Fishman?
Yes.
Ms. Call?
Yes.
Mr. Supalack?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes? Mr. Grimes? Mr. Schneer?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Fox, did you have a comment?
I just didn't think we had to vote on dates. We have to vote on dates. Wow, okay. Now, that's another thing I need to learn.
All right, well, ladies and gentlemen, it has been a long evening, and we don't need to belabor it anymore. As always, it's a pleasure working with you. You teach me something every every time we meet. So thank you for your dedication and your your time this evening. Staff, as always, your time is not we can't tell you how much we appreciate all of the time and dedication that you put in, not just your evenings that are away from your families, away from everything else, but putting up with all of us. We are not the easiest people to work with, so thank you for your patience and and staying with us this evening.
I'll second that as well.
Thank you all. We enjoy working with you as well.
All right, everyone, we'll see you Monday. Have a wonderful evening. Try to get some sleep and stay healthy.
Thanks.
Bye-bye.